Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to our November the 19th, 2019 monthly work session. Where did this year go? It's really gone by very quickly. And up first, we have a discussion of our property purchase contracts that are on our agenda for this afternoon. And could Jody Dumas and Mickey Ryan please come forward along with any other person that I don't have on my list, like Paul Pitcher and others? Welcome.
Okay, well, good morning. Thank you very much. We appreciate-
Mr. Robinson is delayed his short time. He'll be here any minute.
Good morning. Good morning. So, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today to talk about two items on your workshop agenda. They are both here to address capacity. We have two potential property purchase agreements. They're on the workshop for discussion today, and then they are on the consent agenda for tomorrow, this afternoon's board meeting, should you so desire that we could go ahead and enter an agreement to purchase these properties. So, the way we're going to kind of process this, we've got a team of individuals here who have been working on this for the last several months. Art Hardy is back here, who has been working on the contracts with us. And Jeff Greby is also back here, who's been intimately involved with us as we put these contracts together with these developers to buy these properties. So, there are two properties that are for your consideration today. We're going to talk a little bit about them here. And then Diane Comanati, who's at the podium right there, has a short presentation she's going to take us to to talk about why we are looking at these two properties at this particular timeframe. So, two properties. One, we're kind of calling the Hale site, because that's the gentleman owns the property. And Diane will show you exactly where this is on a map in a few minutes here. But basically, if you're headed down Clark Road, you get to the new Lorain Road. And if you look to the left, Lorain Road is the old B Ridge Extension. If you look to the right, all the development that's going on, that'll be Lorain Road Extension. Our property is right down directly off that new road that they're currently putting in. We are looking at approximately a 65-acre parcel, and we have a max purchase price of 6.3 million on that particular property. The way we went about pricing these properties is, according to your school board policy, we have two onboard appraisers that we contract with. On both of these sites, we sent our appraisers out, and Mickey did all of this, sent our appraisers out to look at the properties, give us back an independent appraisal of both properties. And our strategy moving forward, because we're purchasing more than one property at a time here, is to make sure we're being fair with all of the owners and developers, is to present a price, which was the average price of the two appraisals. So, AANG is one of our appraisals. Haber-
Hedema Saber.
Hedema Saber is our other appraiser. And so, what we did is, as they would come back with prices for us, we would average the two appraisals, and that's the price we would present as what we would make our offer to the individuals we're negotiating with. So, we thought that was a fair way to proceed. So, the Hale site is 65 acres or so, a max purchase price of 6.3 million. Some of the actual purchase prices, let me say, will vary from what you see on your board. These are max prices, what we've listed on the board items. And the reason for that is, if you are okay with us entering into these contracts, it opens up 120-day window where we do our due diligence on all of these properties. And one of the things we're going to see on these properties as we start to look at them are, there are some wetlands, there's some acreage that's not usable. So, as we define what that acreage looks like, that usable acreage, our purchase price will drop based on that actual usable acreage. So, again, this is based on the total property amount. It's a max price. Our purchase prices will most likely be under these prices you're going to see listed on the board today. So, our first site, like I said, is 65 acres, 6.3 million. That has been proposed to be a location of a K-8 school. That is an area of growth that we're experiencing, as you have heard. We have conversations for several years about Ashton Elementary, Lakeview Elementary, and Sarasota Middle. In conversations with the superintendent, he felt very strongly about moving forward with a K-8. He thought that that was a nice model for parents who have continuity, obviously, from elementary through middle school. He thought it was a great option in the area. So, as we've kind of laid this property out, Paul Pitcher's done a lot of work in working with Mike Foley to kind of lay out what this might look like. We've laid out a K-8 on this property. It fits very nicely. We think it's a good piece of property for that option for us. The second piece of property for your consideration today is up in Lakewood Ranch, another area of high growth. It is actually east of the interstate. It is about 60 acres. Again, that is the total size of the property. The usable is lower than that. So, again, just like with the other property, the final purchase price will change a little bit. It is currently listed on your agenda for a purchase price of 7.65 million. Again, same strategy moving forward with both of our appraisers, taking the average appraisal price, and moving forward with that as our offer. Again, you will see that price change as we narrow in on, if you approve it, and we go through our 120-day investigation period, as we narrow in on what the actual usable acreage is on that particular site, that purchase price will change a little bit. In terms of strategy on this particular property, we feel it's an area of growth in the community, northern community. It has been, as we've tried to lay this out, again, Paul Pitcher's done a lot of work on this. We've envisioned, again, through our superintendent, a magnet school in this area, a K-12 magnet school, to aggress not only growth in the area, but certainly attract students from throughout the county and surrounding counties into this particular site. So, with that, those are the kind of summaries of the two sites. And if you don't have any initial questions, what I'll ask Ms. Comanati to do is kind of take us through a little more detail on why the location and why this timing. Yes?
I've got some general questions. First off, do we own any property to the east of 75?
Yes, we do. Mickey's whispering on me. Mickey's the obviously expert on all of this stuff planning, so we appreciate that. We do. We own an elementary site, 20 acres. It is, again, off of Lorain Road, off of Fruitville and Lorain, as you head north. We have a 20-acre site set aside in Lakewood Ranch for an elementary school. Correct?
I'm familiar with that. Do we have any other property east of 75, stretching all the way down, say, to Northport?
We have some property in the Woodlands DRI, which is adjacent to I-75.
Right.
We have a high school site and an elementary site there. Further south off of Toledo Blade Boulevard, we have a future middle school site.
So, we have, what, two middle school sites in Northport?
We have one.
One middle, and one high school, and two elementary. That's right. Okay. So, really, we own nothing east of 75, if you will, in the north part of the county.
Correct.
Correct.
We also own, which I never knew until recently, the Pine View complex from Pine View down to Bay Road. We own quite a bit of property there, and I think something that would be large enough to accommodate a K-8 as well.
We do. We have property right behind the purchasing complex, adjacent to transportation, right behind the purchasing complex. There is some property there. There's quite a bit of wetlands on there, but it's something Paul has looked at in the past, and it's certainly a spot that if we wanted to, we could put something on that site.
And the sheriff is on our property and is moving. Correct?
That's correct.
Mrs. Ecker?
One of the things that we talked about was the possibility of doing some type of building with another builder or with the county, building some workforce housing on that property, because it is such a big piece of property, once the sheriff vacates his land. So, it would be strictly for our teachers or staff. So, that's, just to put that in the back of our heads as we move forward.
And I think we were looking at that as a K-8 or a K-5, as well as workforce housing of 140 or so units of apartment complex, but very, very conceptually. I will say that. Any other questions, Mrs. Brown?
Regarding the Lakewood Ranch, I know that they set aside some property for an elementary school. When does it look like we're going to be starting with that school?
That school would be further out, because it's out off Lorain Road, and the villages of Lakewood Ranch, they started their construction adjacent to the interstate and university, so they haven't moved out that way yet. So, I would say that would be five years or more out.
Oh, I thought they were showing that it was part of their villages that they were showing.
It's part of that. That school site was required to be identified as part of their development of regional impact approval, and it's identified as 20 usable acres for us for the future.
So, we would probably do this one before we did that one?
Yeah, that's the current game plan. This is an area where, again, there's a lot of development going on currently, and the vision was to create a magnet school in that location.
And then I have some questions about a magnet school. My understanding, if we bring students in from another county, of course, that's in the plan of what Tallahassee said, but the money doesn't follow those kids. The money comes from our county, does it not?
Mitzi, that's a question for you.
If those students are enrolled in our district, we receive their FTE.
We receive their FTE, but, so, we receive what, so, but basically, this is what our, we don't get any money from Manatee County for that. We might get what the state would give, but the majority of those students are paid for with our local property taxes. The way I understand-
Okay.
-the FFP formula.
Yeah, with the formula 90/10. Yes.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe that might work to get it started, but I would hope that at some point, we look to build schools for Sarasota County students.
Those days are gone. I'm sorry to say, those days are gone. Bridgette?
I know you guys have a presentation, so some of the questions I have may be incurred, because it was kind of the why and what, but my master question is, because Ms. Jane had mentioned some stuff, that I had some similar questions of, what currently do we have vacant land of? What were they used for? Are we changing that? Because I know there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to planning, and I know that there's limited, I know that there's limited large acreages of land all across the state, so I recognize that. But I also want to balance not being in the real estate business from an education standpoint. So, I get all those components. I just want, I don't know if this is part of the presentation, to see a map of essentially all the locations that we currently have, or then that we're proposing.
Yeah, so, we're not going to be able, we don't have anything prepared today to show you that. We have that and can get that to you, but we don't have anything in the presentation that would show you all of our properties, you know, district-wide and what's available.
Okay.
I would say, per Ms. Goodwin's question earlier, in terms of everything from, say, Venice north, we have nothing east of the interstate.
Right, and there's absolutely substantial growth planned for that. It's just timing it out, and that's the balance of where we're at.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
I can remember what effort it was to buy those lots in Northport. It was really a big challenge. It was like 90-something parcels that we had to buy individually, and it was really a-
Individually?
A big, big problem.
Individually?
Yeah, it was individually. Yeah. It was in a depressed economy, so it was a little bit easier, because a lot of them, you know, really had not had anything built on them, and a lot of people were just kind of like, "Oh, yeah, I remember buying that property, but I haven't used it." Caroline?
I live out there. I live in Ben Tree. So, I travel the roads going out there. I see the building that's going on there. And we definitely need schools out there. The only high school we have that would service them would be either Sarasota High School or Riverview. It's a long way in.
The other thing that Mickey will comment on as we move through the presentation is the whole development of Hyatt Ranch. That's another large development out there that's kind of just coming to the point that Mickey's involved in meetings with the county in terms of what all that looks like. But in these two scenarios also, we'd be picking up some capacity from Hyatt Ranch, and we're also having conversations with Hyatt Ranch about schools within that development also.
And that's 14,000 units planned out there.
I see it. I see the beginnings of it.
I guess my only, again, more of an aggregate question is, because we're having the workshop today, and this is not on you, but the workshop's today, and the vote is today, and there's substantial purchases, and I know that's a kind of precursor for you to move forward, but not knowing kind of what that master plan for the district is, how it ties into likely potential enrollment of the growth, I mean, I don't know how tapped in everyone is. I know from knowing where various development communities are, that's my only reservation is before saying, "Hey, green light this," even though we really don't have a full picture of-
Absolutely.
...our district.
Why don't we have Ms. Comanati take us through the presentation? She can kind of take us through. Mickey can narrate for us, and let's see if we can answer some of the questions this morning.
Good morning. So, I was asked to put together this presentation. More of a visual for you to see what is going on east county. First, we have a visual of the Sky Ranch, which is the new development coming in. This here would be our site.
That's on Lorain Road. And the location actually lines up across the street from their park community area, and we've already talked to them about aligning up a school crossing there.
And then we address overcapacity at our central county schools. As most of us know, Ashton Elementary is well overcapacity with an enrollment this year so far of 1,087 students and a permanent fish capacity of 734 student stations, leaving a negative 353 student stations in permanent capacity. So, we do have a lot of portables on that campus, not much room to add many more.
We're planning on adding three more this summer.
Lakeview Elementary has an enrollment this year of 658 students with a permanent fish capacity of 594, leaving negative 64 student stations in permanent school capacity. So, both of our elementary schools out in this area are overcapacity now in permanent fish space.
And there is a link to this presentation, so you'll be able to get to this and see it closer.
Sarasota Middle, our middle school in this area, has an enrollment this year of 1,234 students with a permanent fish capacity of 1,406, leaving 172 student stations available for growth in the area. Now, this map will show development in this area. This here is Sky Ranch, and our property right next to it, or our proposed property, development going on in the area. We still have some growth here within Palmer Ranch that affects Ashton. This here is Edgewater, which will affect Ashton. And as we scroll down, this kind of gives you an outline of all the development and how it impacts each of the schools, with a total generation of all of those, 585 elementary and middle school students, or 65 students per grade level.
Can we get this, I don't know if it's something we could send to Kathy and have printed out for us, even, because there's a lot. Even with glasses, I can't see.
I think the fifth bullet point was interesting.
Kathy, do you have the link to it?
I did provide a link. I don't know if you can make it bigger.
Control plus? I was kidding.
Does that help a little?
I'd actually go a little more if you could.
Control plus. Control plus, that's what I said.
One more time?
This here just breaks down each of those developments on the map, how many units they're coming in, single family, multifamily, and then using our student generation rate, how many students are projected out of those developments.
Actually, Diane, would you scroll back to the top, and let's go back to the map where they, we showed the property and where it's situated in relation to some of the other growth. So, again, you can see the property site with a little schoolhouse there, and kind of situated right in the area of growth. And again, it's located in a very nice area, right across from a park, with entrances that kind of, we've got them planned out so that entrances into the community and the park are kind of right aligned with our facility, so it's a good adjacency. That's the K-8 site, correct. And again, the initial plan is to try and make sure we address Ashton, Lakeview, and Sarasota with this K-8.
And I'd like to say, the property that surrounds our site, Mr. Hales worked in conjunction with the Turners to get approval on that whole area. Sky Village is what's being developed now. Mr. Hales' property will be developed in the future and have a lot of residential surrounding that school site.
Yeah, so, when this is fully developed, our school site will sit in the middle of residential on both sides, which obviously, from a transportation's perspective, makes a lot of sense, because we have a lot of walkers to this campus. This, I think, truly will be a community campus if you approve it.
What would that timeline look like?
So, we are obviously very concerned with the growth at Ashton and Sarasota and Lakeview. And so, if you guys approve this, we would go into a 120-day period of where we make sure that this property is indeed what we want to purchase. We get everything narrowed down. We would then look to start going under contract to build ASAP. If you guys agree, we would like to be in this school within three years.
And our CIP has funds allocated for the build?
It does not. Our plan at this point, in terms of talking with Mitzi, and I don't make it, Mitzi, if you want to take this conversation over, was to seek some borrowing to be able to purchase and not, well, the property is impact fee, but to be able to build, we'd have to borrow.
Okay.
That was the plan, was to use impact fees to pay for the land for growth, and then anticipating a borrowing to pay for the construction of the school.
And the impact fees, we have a timeline. Is that right? Are we coming up on that timeline? Or no? It's been a while.
Well, we built the transportation complex that helped alleviate some of the issues with bumping up on the edge, but we are still always, you know, if we don't continue to use those dollars for growth, we have to return them because it becomes an administrative nightmare.
Was it seven?
I thought it was seven. Five to seven, something like that.
Yeah, I thought it was five.
I thought it was five, and I thought you changed it to seven.
Oh, maybe they did.
I thought it was still five.
And then, so, the build-out would be ASAP, expected to be complete, like CO, I don't know if you say CO in that circumstance, but three years?
Paul, we talked about?
Yeah, we would probably look, we don't have a K-12 model.
A K-8.
A K-8, excuse me. So, we would look to see if there was a model out there that we could essentially try a reuse on, modify it for our needs. So, we're looking anywhere between 12 and 16 months for the design piece, and then somewhere around 18 months for the build.
When you say model, you don't mean the actual academic model you're talking about, the specifications for the build?
Floor plan and building, correct.
All of our K-8 models are lower in the commons, upper middle, you know, that type of thing. And we've used those in terms of sizing the property, but that's not what we would build, obviously. So, we've got to look to some of our designers to help us out with what a current K-8 model might look like, and how would it work for us.
And this would be design-build, likely?
No, it would be through selection process.
Okay.
And it will also be, most likely, a hurricane shelter, too.
Yeah, based on flood zones. We have not had conversations with the county yet, but my guess is, both this one and if we elected to move forward with anything at the Lakewood Ranch site, there would probably be shelters.
It would make very good sense for the county.
And we would be asking the county to make contribution for the funding component.
Well, I have been concerned for several years that we did not own any property east of 75, and anything in North County. And I think, you know, that we've talked about this for a number of years, but haven't done anything. And I think our growth is going to explode exponentially with the Braves coming to town full-time and other things that are happening in this county. The traffic is noted already, but I think the downtown explosion, which I think is more in the market for those who are seeking a second home retirement, I think that the suburbs are really exploding with this new growth and beautiful homes out east, because there's no other place to go except South County. And South County is really in a build-out mode now. Every time you go anywhere, you're seeing a new development. So, you know, I think this is a, I think this is a good thing. Caroline?
I agree with you. That's been a concern of mine, that we do not have any property out there. And again, driving around and knowing and seeing the growth that's coming out there, and the property that's available for growth, it's kind of scary that we don't have a piece of property, or pieces of property out there.
And I can tell you that, over the years I've been here, we've looked at various times, and when we got close to maybe identifying an area that we could purchase, it got-
It's gone.
It's gone. So, we're, I feel that we're fortunate that we have these opportunities right now, because land is scarce for the size we need.
I know, as we have, and I know Mickey and her team are having 40-day count meetings with principals, but as soon as we sit down with Christie, the principal over at Ashton, you know, the first conversation we always have with her is, "How are you going to help me with growth? How are you going to help me with growth?" And the same thing at Sarasota Middle, you know, it's just, we don't have good solutions for them. This would provide that solution. And I think a good option for parents, because a K-8 model, I know in my experience, that transition from elementary to middle school is just tough on students. And so, I think the K-8 model, although maybe a little more expensive operationally, for parents, is a good option.
And a lot of districts are, across the state, are doing that, more K-8s.
I love the K-8 model. I think the bigger question is, and I agree with your point, I think that when you look at it, there is a lot, there's certainly a lot of growth, certainly in the areas you're identifying. I know Ashton's busting at the seams, and I know we've talked about this conceptually as to whether we have redistricting, which I know is almost a four-letter word in this world, and I get that, and I'm not pushing for that, but I think, the only concern I have is, I don't want to end up like a certain county where they have their opening four schools at one time. And so, and I know there's a lot that goes into the planning process, but we listed out some of the items, some of the areas we have down south, the middle, I think we said one middle school site, one high school site, and what's our timeline for those build-outs? Do we have any?
So, they're currently on hold, and so, we have those sites, and we just continue to monitor 40-day counts, kind of see what's going on in the community. We rely on principals, obviously, to give us some feedback, and those sites are out there, but they're not really anywhere in our five-year window at this point. Now, two years from now, it could explode, and we could be back and say, "Listen, you know, we need to move forward quicker." But at this point, we don't see them on the five-year horizon timeline.
How long ago did we purchase those sites collectively?
I would say the sites in the Woodland DRI, which is an elementary and a high school site, were on the books as part of that DRI approval when I came here in '06. So, we already had-
It's been a long time.
Long time. The Haberland site, which is an elementary site, and the Largo Preserve, which is a middle school site, were both purchased probably about, I want to say, six or seven years ago.
2012. I think it was 2015.
Yeah, because while Ken was still here, because we worked on that.
And the reason we did that is because the land was so scarce in Northport. What we went through trying to find the pieces in order to build an elementary school was horrible. So, we decided to get ahead of it and have the lands so that we, before it was used, because it's a desirable, affordable community to use those prop-
And with 60,000 flat lots that can come in and get building permits-
Exactly.
-at any point that we won't see, like a large development, we needed to secure a site.
There could be one little house right there, and all this property available.
Yeah, I think when the board made that decision to purchase those properties in Northport, I think that was a very forward-looking decision. You know, I don't think the answer is, if it's going to happen in Northport, it's just when. You're positioned to be able to respond in Northport. You're not in mid-county, which is why we're addressing the needs there now.
Exactly. We are not in north and mid-county at all. And, you know, I know when we bought that last elementary, it was quite a difficult proposition, but it was at a time when we're just coming out of the recession, and a lot of those property owners were like, "Yeah, I'm ready to go." So, we got some excellent prices on some of those lots, and we had, I think, very few of the lots had homes on them. Some of them weren't even in use. So, it turned out to be, it was a little detailed in terms of buying all those single-unit properties, but it turned out to be a good thing.
So, my question is, if we commit to purchase those lots now, and you find through mitigation that it's less costly, and if something happens that we no longer want to purchase that, can we still then, do we still have to move forward with the purchasing of it?
So, there are certain stipulations in the contract, but a 120-day window lets us have a window to make a decision, a final decision on whether we want the property or not. So, let's say we started looking into- So, let's say we started looking into the property and we were going to do some environmental tests, and we're going to make sure we understand what the property boundaries are. Let's say we've got some readings that came back on environmental tests that are questionable. We have the ability to back out of that contract within a 120-day window. We do not have to purchase.
Pursue it to the contract with it.
Correct, correct. And if you want more clarification, obviously, Art and-
Six months.
Okay.
I have a plan-
Six months.
Six months, excuse me.
I have a planning question. This is wild, so. Have we ever looked at, especially because we talk about the various parcels of land or acreages of land that we have, and given the current property market, have we ever looked at, because where we're sitting today is a very high property value area, the landings itself, has that ever been contemplated as to moving central?
Yes, we have. We've had a lot of conversations, I would say, in the last year and a half, two years on the options. And we've several times employed a real estate agent to go ahead and look at available properties for us, you know, throughout Sarasota County in terms of what our value is here versus what we could pick up 10 acres for and rebuild on. So, we've had a lot of conversations wrapped around that particular issue.
And any kind of stakemate or?
Yeah, so originally, when we started talking about this, we had an initial value of the landings being somewhere around upwards of $31, $32 million for our landings property. Fast forward a year or so after that, the most recent conversations, that value has fallen to, say, 20 or so million dollars. Yeah. Apparently, the market for commercial properties in the area has softened. And so, that last conversation, the group of us who we're talking about said, "Let's take a look at this again when our, when commercial properties back up again."
Because it's zoned for commercial.
That's correct.
We even, Bridgette, we even looked at having a company come in and build us for a lease, what do you call it, a lease purchase?
Correct.
We looked at that, too. And that wasn't, it just wasn't worth it at that time.
Any other questions? Mrs. Brown?
So, go ahead, Diane, if you want to move down to the next piece of property.
So, here we are, the Lakewood Ranch property. This is just kind of an overview of the Lakewood Ranch site plan for development.
It's in the Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park.
Yes, you'll see when I scroll up, the property sits right here in the Lakewood Ranch Corporate Park. This, all north of university here, is part of the villages of Lakewood Ranch South. We have some development going on here. This is a new Neil community coming in. About 900 residents plan to be built in there. Lake Park Estates out here is another 400, single families.
And Lakewood Ranch is over 5,000 units.
Yeah.
And so, everybody's oriented on this map. Obviously, the road just to the north of the blue is University Parkway and obviously the large road running horizontally is 75.
Where is their school site that they gave us?
It's out Lorraine Road, north of, I guess, north of university, it was sounding Lorraine, I went to the grand opening of that part.
South of university.
South of university, but on Lorraine Road.
Yes.
And the new section that opened up, and they have a tunnel that goes under the road and-
Correct, it's right in that area, right by that tunnel, it's right in the area of our property, correct.
When you say 5,000, that's on the Sarasota side?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm looking at, again, breaking down the development, the number of units, the generation, student generation, we're looking at a total of 1,41 elementary, middle, and high school students, or 119 students per grade level.
So, we're looking at a different demographic, if you will, in terms of this area. We're talking in many areas that we're looking at, what, .2 per household student?
Yes.
But we're not looking at that in Lakewood Ranch as a rule. Very different. Makes me happy.
That's it for the presentation.
Any other questions?
And again, I think, Diane, we have a link to this, which we can send them, so you can take a look at it. We apologize, we could not print this off for you. Diane is running this in GIS software.
Thought so.
But we will give you that link, so you can take a look at the presentation.
My only question is, and I kind of know this is a loaded question, because I understand when it's a negotiation process, my only challenge is there's a lot for us to consider. And even when we, again, consider, I do understand the need to be forward-looking and plan ahead, but I also, given some of the questions of some of the vacant land that we have, and again, not wanting to be in the quote-unquote "real estate business," but I also recognize the need for planning, what is the, if it were not to be, I mean, it's on consent, but if, just hypothetically, if we wanted more time to consider it, what is our timeline? I mean, this is, has to have, I mean, do you?
Yeah, so certainly, if you were not comfortable with having it on this afternoon's board, we could move that to the board meeting in December, if you'd be more comfortable with that.
We only have one more board meeting this year, and I wouldn't, I don't think we want to move it any further than that, but we're okay with waiting until the 10th of December?
I would be, I would prefer that, just because it's, and I'm not saying that there's any necessity, but there were some items there, and I think looking at it as, from a master plan, from the district standpoint, from a capacity, like I know, I'm familiar with Ashton, I think you guys highlighted Lakeview, I'm very familiar with all the developments that you're talking about, but looking at it by way, just, I want to make sure it's being done, which I'm not doubting you, but to vote on it, if we could postpone it to the 10th, I would, it would make me feel much more comfortable, given the presentation today and the-
Is that all right with everybody?
Is that, I mean, I don't want, that's just my opinion, but-
Put that on the agenda for the 10th. Is that better for you, Eric? You had some issues with this a few days ago.
All I ask is a question about 5,000, but yeah.
Okay, let's move it to December 10th.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
I think we're going to lose, that's why, I mean, I'm not involved in negotiations, so I don't want to-
No, I think in terms of the negotiating teams that we've met with, I think they would be fine, understanding that we want a little more time to digest what we're doing, and it makes a lot of sense, so I think it'd be not a problem.
That's very good, thank you.
Up next, we have our community partnership school application. Thank you all. Amy Donner?
Thank you.
I want to state, before we get started with this, that this is just to, a short snapshot, if you will, of the application process. This is not going to be giving a presentation by all of the stakeholders involved or anything else. We just want to make sure that we, as the school board, understand what our application was and what we're looking to achieve. I'm sure there'll be other times that we might bring this back after the first of the year for the board to look at. As you well know, this is a program that started with some funding to the University of Central Florida, they were as an agent. And in our neighborhood, Manatee County is now implementing this program for Manatee Elementary. They are in the implementation stage, already approved, and they will implement this next school year.
Right, my understanding is they just were awarded one of these planning grants that we applied for, so, yep.
Great.
So, thank you for inviting me. I guess I want to first start with what a community school is or a community partner school, partnership school is. My understanding of what a community partnership school is, is that it becomes a hub for lots of activities at the school. So, if a parent needs healthcare, that's done at the school. If there's extended day activities, those are done at the school as well. Parents can receive educational opportunities at the school. So, the school becomes that hub for the community, for wraparound services, so that if a family, a parent might normally have to choose between bringing their child to school or going to the doctor, they don't have to choose anymore. Both of those things can happen at school. They can drop the kid off and they can go, you know, have their doctor's appointment at the school. Or if the child needs dental care or vision care, that happens at the school in addition to them attending school. So, the school becomes that hub, that central place where they can receive lots of services. So, as a result of that, the goals of a community partnership school are to improve parent and family, parent, family, and community engagement, to provide comprehensive health and wellness, and to boost academics. So, that's the goal of providing, of offering or starting a community partnership school. So, as you mentioned, UCF, University of Central Florida, was the recipient of dollars from the Florida Legislature to start this grant program. And they are offering planning grants and implementation grants. Because we don't have a school, we were looking at the planning grants. They were offering a one-year grant of $75,000. They had a round in July, which we didn't quite make the deadline, so we set that aside. The new grants, in one place it says 75,000, in one place it says 72,500, so we're not really sure exactly how much money we'll get. But it's money basically to plan for a community partnership school. And ours was, the school we selected was Gocio Elementary. So, with that money, there's a 25% match that was required. So, it's basically a $100,000 project, $25,000 from the school district, $75,000 roughly from the grant to plan, a one-year planning grant through June 2020. So, during that time, that money would be spent to hire a director of the community partnership school, who will be charged with basically doing the planning, which involves creating a memorandum of understanding between the four core partners, and also doing a community needs assessment. So, basically, looking out at the community and assessing, what does this particular community that serves, that Gocio Elementary serves, what do they need? What services in particular would they like to have? So, the four core partners were Children's Home Society, the school district, we had to have a healthcare provider, which was Center Place Health, and a university or college, which was USF Sarasota, Manatee. And I should just note that the school district itself was not an eligible applicant. The application and the fiscal agent is actually the nonprofit partner. So, we were one of the core partners, but we weren't the actual applicant. The Children's Home Society was the applicant. They submitted the application, they frankly did most of the work, because they gathered all the letters of support, wrote most of the proposal, I provided a lot of the data that they needed, helped with, you know, the writing of the application, but it was really their application that was submitted. So, that's really what the application was about. Like I said, it was for Gocio Elementary School. And that, we should hear about that. It was due in late October. I believe they're expecting to make awards in December.
Okay, that was my next question. Shirley?
This is just the planning grant, and obviously, it's just for the one school.
Correct.
And if we wanted to expand it, we'd have to do another one for other schools?
Correct. So, this is a competitive process. You know, we had to prove to them that the school has a need, that our plan is sound. You know, it's not just everybody who applies gets one of these grants. So, if we wanted to expand to a different school, we would have to go through the same process for this planning grant, provide, demonstrate there's a need, you know, everything that goes into that. And competitively, when they open another round, submit another application for another school.
And then, the implementation grants, that's all funding by the legislature?
That's my understanding, yes.
And, you know, how stable or?
That's an excellent question. I don't know the answer. My understanding from what we were told by Children's Home Society, and they know quite a bit, because they're partners on something like 18 other schools, is that right now, the legislature is very interested in this, and the funding has been pretty significant. But it's a great question, and this is, the expectation is that this is at least a 25-year partnership between the, right, so, I don't know about you, but I probably won't be here for 25 years, so.
That would be lovely, wouldn't it?
So, I mean, healthcare is improving, but, you know, but I'm not sure why the expectation is 25 years, except that they do want it to be a long-term partnership, you know, offering stability in the community and generational expectations.
Yeah, I would-
But I don't know if the legislature's expectation is to continue funding at that level for quite that long. So, your question is great, and I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I would think that you'd want to look to make sure that they've got it in recurring funding and not annual appropriations.
I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
But I do know that, you know, wraparound services have meant so much to Title I schools and to those poor-performing schools across the state. And I think the legislature has looked at that and said, "Ah, perhaps we ought to open that type of process up to other schools, schools that we haven't looked at, that maybe aren't in failing situations." Certainly, Gocio is not. It's in a B-plus this past year in terms of its grade, highest ever. So, perhaps, you know, this is a good thing, because I know sometimes charter schools were the only ones that were entitled to those wraparound services. I know that's the case with some schools that have, Jefferson County, for example, which is now a charter district with those wraparound services and pays their teachers like 50,000, I think, a year. Isn't that wonderful? At any rate, I think it's interesting. I also think that, according to people who were here before me, that we had something that was wraparound services, Laura's shaking her hand, had, we had wraparound services at some of our northern, at Emma Booker, back in the 90s, is that correct? So, and anything that's of a partnership nature with the community, I think is exciting. We've done that with our summer learning institutes, thanks to the Hinsons and others. We've done that with some of the programs that we're doing that incorporate two-generational learning. So, I think this has got some components of all of those things, so I find it pretty exciting. Bridgette?
Thank you. In concept, I think it's, I think it's a great concept, and I would actually love to hear more about when it occurred back at Emma, what, how that transpired. And I do believe it could change, but there is a lot of support right now, I think, about community schools and wraparound services. My, I have two questions, and I've been trying to do a fair amount of research on this since we discussed it up there for the grant. But how did it come and who, how did it, how was Gocio selected? Kind of to Jane's point, it's a B-plus school, it's doing great, it's got great leadership, and it's got great philanthropy support, but how did that come to be first? I'll stop.
Okay, so that's a good question, and I frankly don't know, I hate to say that, but we were discussing Emma for a little while. My understanding, it was a superintendent decision or a leadership decision, and then when it came back to me and we were discussing which school and, okay, we're ready to go, and we had a week to get it in, it was Gocio.
I think Dr. Kingsley might be able to help with that, please.
Hello. Hi. So, this was a superintendent decision, it was felt that Emma was dealing with a lot of extra services and support at this time, that they wanted to focus as far as DOE coming in and supporting them. And Stephen was receptive to this.
That was my next question.
I will tell you, because you asked about Emma, this is a long-term commitment.
Right.
And so, my concern is that it does not fall the way Emma did. I happened to be a teacher at that time at Emma and then an assistant principal. And once the grant funding left, because that was a grant-funded initiative also-
How many years was that? Give or take, I mean, um-
About five.
Okay.
Yeah. Then the services could no longer be supported by our community partners. So, when you have community partners come in and they have office space and employees and a satellite on a campus, they struggle to maintain that kind of support also. So, that's what happens. So, the long-term commitment is going to be, you know, a decision for you all to make. I believe that the grant requires long-term commitment once it gets confirmed.
And then, the only final thing, and this may not be a question, this is something I just, no surprise to y'all, but, is how it comes to any kind of, and I'll do my own due diligence, but I know there's the wraparound services, meeting children where they're at. I have just grave concerns that compliance on any medical treatment or anything like that, that there's explicit, you know, due diligence and notification, if you will, to, no, not actually, not if you, notification specifically, because that is, and some of the research I've done have seen great success and some, it gets challenging, and so I would like to see that be addressed, because that's a big deal to me and I believe many people in the community. So, that's my only, those are my two statements.
Eric?
So, can we talk about money?
Yeah.
So, you mentioned, like, for example, dental. So, would we be responsible- So would we be responsible for outfitting a dentist's office there? Or would one of the partners be responsible for outfitting that dental office?
So those are great questions. My understanding is...
Those are the only questions I ask.
Well, that's good to know. My understanding is that as part of the, that's part of the planning process, that's why we get a year of planning. And as the MOU that will be developed, and I think we promised we would have it done by March, would be very specific who's pays for what. Right there in black and white in the MOU is Center Place Health, you do this and you pay for this. My understanding is Medicaid, Medicare, some things pay for those. I'm not an expert in any of this.
Yeah, but they don't pay for the chair, I mean, they pay for the dental...
But yes, there's expect, I'm sure there would be expectations that we would supply space and heating and cooling and those kinds of things, what I would expect would all be spelled out in the MOU.
So if we go to the Mary Poppins theory first, so if everything goes great, legislature gives us money, is the expectation that this costs the district any money? If we're getting the money from the state, we've got the four people, will the cost per student be more in this situation?
There's the planning grant that is...
No, I'm talking about once it's up and running.
I know, and then there's an implementation grant. And that's a very good question that you would want to have answers for before you make a commitment.
Oh, so you don't know the answer to that question?
So this is the stage you're gathering all the information, and therefore, the grant is paying for you to do the due diligence and resource, and then present the board with a plan of action. You're entering in memorandum, MOUs in the event that...
And I'm not done.
Oh, sorry, I just want to make sure, okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Because I believe that we apply for an implementation grant. So my understanding is if the planning doesn't go so well, then we say, this is not going to work for us, because we've looked at all the possibilities, we don't have to apply for...
So one of the biggest things that's happened probably since the '90s as today, as you can see, is the walls that we have built up and the barriers, I would say, the barriers of entry for community to come into our schools, because, so how are we going to balance the security of the schools with allowing people to come in to get services that, if the parents come and get services, have really nothing to do with interacting with school? They're not coming in there for the education of their kids, they're coming to get their own services. Do you envision that to be within the walls? Or you envision that to be out, or we got to build a separate building? Because all these walls cover all of our buildings within the building. Are you envisioning us having to build buildings outside the wall? And if we build buildings outside the wall, how do those students get to get to, when they need to get services? Because we have built these walls around these schools that impede the community interaction. I'm just curious, for good reasons. So I'm just curious, has anybody thought about the balancing act between safety and security of the students and allowing it to have an openness so the community feels welcome to going in?
So I will tell you, at Emma, what we did was we had fenced area, and outside the fence were portables, probably four or five portables, that housed our community partners. That is absolutely a question that needs to be answered during the planning stage. Yeah.
Because there are facilities required, from what I know of Manatee, that they will have, you know, an office, like you mentioned. It'll either be a doctor's office, a dental office, or a combination of varying different partnerships. So I don't have the answer to that.
Can I just add one more thing? I know Jerry's here, and I know she worked really hard to get our partners sending their letters of intent to support this project.
And we're prepared to answer all your questions right now, but I don't know what the process is, because there's very specific answers to your very specific questions, which we anticipated. And it's, you know, you really need to understand, you already voted for it, you really need to understand that, because all the partners are watching this proceeding.
Step up to the microphone, please, ma'am. Thank you.
Yep. Say your name. My name is Jerry Chaffee. There you go. My name is Jerry Chaffee, pathological improver, and annoying to almost of you. A couple of things about funding. This is a concept called braided funding. There's 17 schools already in the planning or implementation track in the state of Florida. This was started in 2010, and it was started in Orlando with one school. The person that led that initiative is now the director of the Center for Community Schools at UCF. UCF is a fiscal agent. And over the past 10 years, the legislature, in that 70-70 bill that a lot of people hate, in this past year, that was the one thing that was just something that everybody agreed on. And it's funding almost five times more than before, the community partnership school concept. They gave us $7.1 million, mostly for planning grants and implementation grants. The 17 schools that are in process right now, only one of them has completed its five-year certification process and is a full, fully-vetted partnership school, but they have to continue to remain in compliance. And the UCF provides kind of like professional development for that and tracking and monitoring. The other ones are in various stages of the five-year process. Most of the grants, that pocket of money, it went to additional funding for implementation, which is a little bit more than planning, and a lot of them went towards new schools. We worked for over a year, and actually Carol Lerner back here, and a lot of people from the community, and we invited all of you to all of our community forums. Some of you came, but Manatee jumped on it right away, and now they made the July deadline. On September 23rd, we were advised that there was a little bit of money left over. All the work was in place for Sarasota, you know, because from the community, I mean, this is truly a community effort. The information had been relayed to UCF and Children's Home Society of Florida, and they were already in the community. So it was a natural. So we brought it to the district, and the district said, yes, let's do it.
To the superintendent.
Right, I'm sorry, to the superintendent. And I guess there was a phone call with a lot of people on it, with Children's Home Society and all of that. To your question about the health services, it has to be an FQHC, which is, you know, new term for me. It's a federally qualified health center. Every county has a few that are, a few medical facilities that are federally qualified to receive Medicaid and other wraparound money, which is actually beyond Medicaid. In Sarasota, that center is Center Place Health, which was created in about 2010 by Bill Little, if you all know Bill Little. This was one of his biggest projects, is this center. Because the CEO there, who actually, there's a new CEO coming, which was perfect, because we also had a conference call with her, because they already are familiar with the work that FQHCs are doing in all of these different 17 schools, it was a natural that they would be immediately interested in giving us a letter of support. So the four main letters to even have this application be considered were the district, this Center Place Health, which Carol and I secured, USF, which Carol and I secured by the dean of the college in Tampa, Dr. Knopel actually is for this. They're going through consolidation, so there's some issues as to how much they can commit to. And then Children's Home Society, which didn't need to have a letter because they were the backbone of the grant. Every community school is different, so in Sarasota, really the planning portion, the planning months, that's where all of your questions get answered. And obviously, this is an opportunity for, to bring a variety of voices to the table, because you really want to make it a community partnership school. And one thing I wanted to tell you is that over here, we've got Shelley Dorfman, who is, you know, has been involved, all of you probably know her, she's worked at MIE Booker for 10 years. She's part of the advisory board, that is, in addition to the community needs assessment and the liaison. The liaison is not hired until that need assessment is underway, and the advisory board is set in place, which is something that you guys have to figure out. Who is the right person with a diversity of skills that needs to be on that board for their voices to be represented? And something to keep in mind is that the principal, this concept really succeeds or falters because of the principal. The principal has to be somebody that has the backing of not only the community, but the families, the staff, and that is pretty much a rock star. You need a rock star principal for this model to be able to succeed, be unique to the school, and also be able to be replicated. It's very, very successful for this type of, you know, children of poverty and self-segregating aspect of our, unfortunately, public school system. If you, if the districts spend more time making our schools innovative and adopting innovative programming and doing this type of needs assessment, then privatization really doesn't happen. I mean, really?
Jerry, can I just make sure that they don't have any other questions? Because I know our time was limited.
Braided funding is something you need to, that answers the question about funding. Every partner brings their own funds to this, so it's not legislative-dependent. This is a model that is designed to be self-sustaining, as opposed to the full-service model that happened at MIE, which was DOE grant-dependent when the, you know, leadership changed and we're not doing cradle-to-career stuff. That went by the wayside, and it shut down overnight.
Thank you so much.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. I think the long-term sustainability needs to be still answered, that question, so that you are fully aware of the commitment that the school board has to make.
Well, I think Stephen Royce is a rock star, so I vote for him every time. I mean, I think he's done a remarkable job of leading. Carol, did you have something?
I have one thing. I think I...
Come upside, so we can hear you. Hello.
Hi. I'm Carol Lerner, and I was, I've been very involved in this from the start. But I think at your next workshop, when you address this, that you should invite Sean Nagel. He's the Children's Home Society person, and he'll be able to answer all these questions. He is the regional director for the whole Suncoast area, and I think he should be part of the process. So that would be my suggestion, and I think he'll be able to answer every single question.
Dr. Kingsley?
Thank you.
Will leave this in your great hands and make that decision accordingly, but...
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's exciting. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have a topic on proposed medical marijuana. We'll start with that one.
You want to start with that one?
Yeah.
All right. That is proposed, new proposed policy 5.622. Earlier this fall, the Department, Florida Department of Education reminded us, and all districts, that we needed to have a policy. If you all remember, we talked about this about a year ago, and I think adopted a tacit policy of benign neglect, but that's no longer an option for us. So we were told, along with all the districts in Florida, that no, the legislature said you have to have a policy, and we want to see yours. The Department of Education also forwarded us several policies from districts that had already adopted policies. And I worked with Ms. Dubose, or she really did it, she did all the hard work, put together the proposed policy 5.622, which I think is very similar to those policies that we were given as examples from around the state. And basically, what this says is, in the appropriate circumstances, meaning legal prescriptions and caregivers and parents can administer medical marijuana if necessary to students on our campuses, but they have to do it. We are not responsible for storing the drug. We, none of our employees administer the drug. We just facilitate a caregiver's ability to come onto campus and administer the drug when, and that's an appropriate situation.
I was talking to one of our colleagues in Lee County, and they were looking at how many students were affected by this, and I think it was three in Lee County. Suzie, do we have any idea of how many students?
I did a poll with the nurses, how many have been approached.
Yes.
And my last count was about 11.
Stop talking before you get to the microphone.
I have a...
It'll be done by the time you get to the microphone.
Around 11 requests at this point. And mostly for seizures, so...
So that's, we've been told we have to have a policy. We believe this is an appropriate policy that is very similar to policies that have otherwise been enacted by districts and which DOE has forwarded to us. It also has within it, if the federal government comes in and puts anything, any of our funding at risk, that this policy will be held in abeyance until that's worked out. Because of course, that's a potential tension between the state law and the federal law. But this is the way we're trying to walk that line.
And we have some potential legislation that I've heard about that might be introduced at this next session. So Bridgette?
But we did address it, like you said, and I don't know what the wording you used, but it was well stated, but we did discuss this and adopt something, I guess, temporary. So in the general sense, that doesn't, that's not changing.
We don't, well, no, we don't have a formal policy.
So what...
We talked about procedures, really, and I think this is, in essence, codifying what we've said, which was, we're not going to store the drug. We're not going to administer the drug. If a parent needs access to their child during the school day, they can always have that, but we will now facilitate that, you know, a place on campus where this would be administered.
And that's we, the collective, the school board, any of its employees or contractors or anything like that, is that correct?
Right. The school board employees, health department employees.
Okay.
The people who would be responsible for administering the medical marijuana would be parents or licensed caregivers. That is a statutory, you can be a licensed caregiver.
Okay.
For a person who needs the administration of medical marijuana. And those are the categories of people who would be allowed to administer it, not our, not our employees.
Correct. Shirley?
You said we have 11 students that are wanting this for seizures. Now, is this to prevent seizures, or would this be, if there's a seizure that is happening, that they would then want it administered? Because I would think there would be a time to get a parent on the school grounds to administer it. By the time, that time, the seizure would be over.
At this point, we have asked that medical marijuana be administered outside the school day because it is not considered an emergency med. We have emergency meds for seizures. This is not one of them. This is just something that may be prescribed to keep them leveled out, so that they don't suffer from seizures in the school setting.
All right, so it's not for an active seizure, it's to prevent seizures?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, so we have a couple of other policies, which I would say are more in the way of cleanup or less, perhaps, overarching than the medical marijuana. Just to go through them quickly, and please stop me, I'll kind of do this like we did all the other ones a year or so ago, so stop me if anybody has any questions. 5.16, there's an addition to the children of military families. I'm sorry?
Caroline?
I just have one. Thank you. On item four, it says a student must be considered a resident for enrollment, a resident of what? Of Sarasota or of Florida?
Where are, what are you looking at?
On four.
On 516.
516.
Oh, on 516, I'm sorry.
Wasn't that what you were doing?
Yes, yes, it was. Sorry. A student must be... I believe that comes out of the statute, and that would be a resident for purposes of enrolling, a Florida resident, given that it would not necess, a student could enroll here who's not a resident of the district theoretically.
So therefore, it should say a resident of Florida.
Well, I think we've just, I will have to check to make sure, but I think we've just lifted this from the statute. So we've just used the language from the statute, which always seems to be the safest way to go.
Okay.
But this is just statutory language.
I'm so used to it saying where.
Well, if they lived in Georgia, I guess they could come to school here now, if they had a helicopter or something.
Well, if they were in Manatee County, they could come to school here potentially.
Yes, that's why I didn't say Sarasota.
I think that's why it doesn't say.
Right. 5.31, this is entitled student detention, search, and seizure. There's a, an addition to paragraph four, and this... And this is one of two items related to metal detectors. Paragraph four already says that metal detectors can be used in schools to look for weapons. This adds, "Metal detectors may also be used as part of a search for prohibited articles in the event a staff member has reasonable suspicion to conduct a student search." It is my understanding that there's a desire on the part of administration in appropriate circumstances to use the handheld wands at times. And they're finding metal objects that aren't necessarily weapons, but vaping-type articles. So if we're going to do that, I just wanted to be clear, that's not a weapon, but it's still a metal article. Ms. Ziegler?
This is regarding student only. I know there was a discussion.
This is regarding student. We're going to talk about metal detectors otherwise in, I believe it's 8.10. 6.20 is certification of administrative and instructional personnel. And this is also just language from statutory change. Then 8.10, safety, has two proposed changes. The first is a new article per paragraph five about Cessar, Cessar reporting, and that is also from the statute. And then, going back to your question, Ms. Ziegler, new proposed article 13, which says, "The superintendent is authorized to install metal detectors and other security devices which would assist in the detection of guns and dangerous weapons in school buildings and/or on district property." And at least part of that is so that if we want to, there's policy that says you can do some kind of metal detectors, for example, coming into a board meeting.
Right.
Like I know, I was subjected to at the city of Sarasota at least.
Well, and my understanding was there are limitations as it pertains to law enforcement officers versus administration.
Well, searches, searches generally, there's a, there is a difference, there's a different standard for searches by law enforcement, probable cause.
Right.
As opposed to admini, or searches by administrative personnel, which is just reasonable suspicion. This, what we're talking about, is more in this, is not a targeted search. We think person A has done something wrong or has a prohibited article, therefore, we're going to search them. This is what's called an administrative search, like you go through at an airport or a courthouse, where everybody's searched. There is no probable cause or reasonable suspicion. It's simply to gain access to an area, anybody who goes through gets searched. It's not because there's a particular thought. I mean, every time I go to court, I walk through the metal detector.
Right. Okay.
So is, is this straight out of statute? Do we have to do this?
No. No. The eight, well, 8.105, the Cessar part, is out of statute.
Right.
The new 13 is not out of statute. But there is, there's nothing prohibiting it. But there's also nothing directly permitting, for example, a metal detector to be set up in the ante room out here.
The reason I'm asking that is because this board has not decided whether it wants metal detectors. So I wanted to know if it's required or whether it's an option for us.
It's an option for you. Sir?
To piggyback on Ms. Suckers, if I can continue on where she was going, I, I think the, the decision to install metal detectors, she resides with the board, not with the superintendent. Certainly, this meeting room is our place of business. I mean, this is a reflection upon the board more so than, than anyplace else. And so I would think that though, that instead, I would personally prefer to say board instead of superintendent.
This would be for every school facility.
Yeah.
I, I think that if I woke up tomorrow and found out that there were metal detectors at Venice High and, on all the high schools or all the elementary, and the board wasn't involved in that decision-making, I think that, that would be a bad thing. I think the, I think the board should be, if we decide, if it's decided that we're going to put metal detectors to all the schools, I think, I think that's a board-level decision. I don't think it's a superintendent-level decision.
That's where I was coming from, Eric.
I agree. That's what I said in the beginning.
Yeah, indeed.
Well, it would cost money. Wouldn't the money have to come, wouldn't we have to appropriate it?
Well...
Yes, but it's...
We have to, I think at some point in time, we have to assess metal detectors, not only for here, but for example, the Venice Performing Arts Center.
But who?
Well, I don't know. But, but I do know that, you know, they've absconded 111 knives and 34 firearms, bottle of pepper spray and so forth at the, the events that they did screen for last year. And that's a lot.
I know. But part of the reason that we talked about this and decided we didn't want to do it is because we're setting up people to come through a funnel.
Yes.
And it's much easier to shoot down all of those people in a funnel than it is...
I know. And some districts already have metal detectors.
Many, many do. Many do. And typically, I certainly haven't done a big search. But I did, I did put out, tried to gather some information. And this is probably a couple of months old. But I asked just about the use of metal detectors at board meetings. So not at schools, but at board meetings. And there are a number around the state. Alachua apparently uses walkthrough machines. Broward uses wands. Duval uses wands. Hillsborough uses a walkthrough machine. Manatee uses both, I believe.
Yep.
Marion uses wands. Miami Dade has a walkthrough machine. Seminole has a walkthrough machine. And then a number also told me they didn't use anything, just like we don't at the moment. So I think a lot of this came from the fact that when we went to the city, we, a number of people, myself and a number of administrators, went to the School Avenue discussions at the city of Sarasota. We were all wanded. And I think that got people to thinking, maybe this is where we are in the world. But there's no requirement that any of this happened.
Finishing up with that comment, I would, I would agree with Eric that it should say the school board, not the superintendent.
I agree.
I think I actually, I agree too, because I think you're right. I would be, I think it's a bigger question. There's a lot of presence. I understand having the flexibility. But I also understand having the flexibility in us being blindsided and saying, wait, we didn't support that, but we do give carte blanche. And...
I did have a question mark there, so I don't, I...
All right. Well, I can reword this and bring it back to you for your next board meeting.
So would it say that the board is authorized to install?
No, it'd say, with approval of the school board.
Yeah.
Superintendent with approval of the school board.
With approval of the school board. Because we really shouldn't be.
All right. I'll bring it back, reworded for you and for your December board meeting. I think the last policy we have to discuss is also a brand-new one, 6.93 on best and brightest. Yes?
My issue comes up with, on page three, under awards and amounts, the third paragraph, at the end of the first line, what says considered, considered to be gross award. Can you?
Third paragraph?
Under awards and amounts. Third paragraph, starts with the word "the." And then, if you go to the end, it says, "Considered to be gross, be gross award amounts."
Yeah.
My question is, is, could someone define? I, I, I know what gross means. Typically, gross means, I'm going to pay you $70,000, but you don't get $70,000. You get some number less than that. They take out the employee portion of Social Security, Medicare, and your federal withholding, and any health insurance, any deductions. That's typically what, when I think of gross amount. But the gross amount for best and brightest has, appears to have a different definition. So I just wanted to be sure what definition it should be. For me, my, I believe gross amount should be consistent with how much someone's pay should be, other people's, how they're getting paid. I don't think gross amount should be different, the definition. I think the, the word gross amount should be the same. Ms. Corcoran?
I'm sorry, Eric. Where are you, please?
I'm on the award amounts.
Award amounts on page three.
Page three, third paragraph, starts with the word "the."
The, I am at the award amounts.
The award amounts identified in, in law.
Yeah.
On the cost cap, are considered to be gross award amounts.
Okay.
Meaning before taxes, before...
Well, you got me where you said the last...
I was talking about the end of that first sentence, end of that first line, at the early sentence.
Right. And I, I heard the end.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So what I'm saying is, I would, I would hope that the gross amount is consistent with how we define gross amount when we talk about people's salaries.
Is it not?
Yeah.
So everybody agrees?
I would hope so, too.
Well, I mean, I guess...
I'm sorry. I guess my, my issue is, is that I think it says gross award amounts because categories, well, no, not one. It would just be category four is all left over.
Category one is recruitment. Category four is recognition.
And category one is...
Do you understand, do you understand my difference?
I know exactly.
You know exactly what I'm saying.
We've already had this conversation.
We've had this conversation. Me and Ms. Corcoran have had this conversation a couple of times.
I know, and I think...
And we talked about it at the board meeting, too.
Yeah.
We've talked about it at the board meeting.
So, so the issue for Mr. Robinson is, when it says 2,500, is the award 2,500 or is the award 2,500 less the employer's share of payroll taxes? Because that is the guidance we've received from DOE. And that is how the last three years best and brightest awards have been distributed. So in this particular instance, this 2,500 would actually be a gross to the employee of 23 or whatever it is, or 900 and something for the $1,000. So that would be their gross amount, and then they would get a net pay of whatever. So it missed, to, what Mr. Robinson is saying is the gross amount should be 2,500, not the reduced amount.
Yeah.
Which it could be, we've, we presented that also as an option to the SCTA. The difference is, it's a finite amount of money. So whether the employer taxes come out of the gross pay or they don't, it just adjusts the, whatever is left over pot of recognition dollars that are available to the remaining instructional staff.
Well, has this been, and I wasn't part of the, the conversation that led to the MOU. I know we have an MOU that has been approved by the bargaining teams. That's also on your agenda for this afternoon. And it talks about newly hired teachers will receive a recruitment bonus of 768.62, less employer FICA tax of 7.65%.
Correct.
And, and the recognition. And, and that's consistent through the, that's been agreed to consistently through the retention bonuses, which are the 2,500 and the 1,000, less employer taxes.
All I'm asking is that the gross amount be consistent with how we do all the other renorations.
Is it not right now?
It is not.
No, this one is...
That's what I'm missing. So it's not right now. So if we say, we pay superintendent or whatever down...
I'll give you an example. Let's take the superintendent.
No, we won't take the superintendent. We'll take, we'll take AP, IB, and AS bonuses. So an AP teacher whose student successfully passes the AP test is eligible to receive a $50 award or a $50 bonus for that individual student.
They don't pay taxes on that?
Yeah, they do.
Oh, we, we pay taxes? Okay.
And we pay taxes. And it all comes from that pot of funding. But the pot of funding that we receive is far greater than the amount we get for the, for the $50. It also pays for tests and professional development and a lot of other things. So the pot of money that we receive to pay that bonus is more than adequate to pay the $50 plus our share of the taxes. The pot of money that we have received in the past for best and brightest was a finite amount of money. So all you were able to ever pay was, we were giving you this much money. The bonus was, you know, last year was 7,200 for a highly effective teacher who had an ACT or SAT score of a certain level, 80 percentile. So that 7,200 was reduced because all I received from the state was $7,200. So if I didn't pay, if I paid the employee the 7,200, then the district's general revenue would have had to have paid the employer portion of taxes. So the guidance from the state has always been to reduce the amount of the award by the employer portion of the taxes. Because I'm only stroking you a check for 7,200.
Is that not what we do consistently across the board? I mean, in my world, if I got a bonus, I would expect there would be employee owed.
Obviously.
And employer owed.
No.
Correct. But that is not what we're doing here.
But that is not what the guidance from the state has been either. Because there is only a certain dollar amount. So if I only get $7,200 from the state for a state, this is in the past, the state's bonus program, then I would be out local dollars or FEFP fines.
Right.
Right. To pay the employer portion of the taxes if the employee's paycheck showed a gross bonus of 7,200. So the employee's bonus...
This year, you received it differently, though.
Well, we, but we still received only a finite amount of funding. So we could have paid them the 2,500 and the 1,000, paid the employer taxes, not a problem. But then the amount, that $768 number would go down to 600 and something for everybody else. So I think that in this case, I mean, because I think there is a lawsuit against the state on the, the amount that they send out. But since they gave us the money and we're making that decision this time, I think we probably ought to put it in here that the gross amount awards less employer FICA, just like you do over here, needs to be in this. So that we understand what the gross amount is.
Here's the problem. We have other employees who get bonuses who don't pay the employer portion. So you're going to make teachers pay the employer portion of Social Security. And there are other people in this district who get bonuses, who not only do they not pay the employer portion, we actually paid their employee portion of the bonus.
But this year, it was, this year, it was negotiated by the union. And the union has decided that's the way it's going to be.
Right.
So I would think because of the memorandum of understanding from the union, I think that on this gross award amounts, we ought to have it follow what it says here.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that. My issue is, is we're creating a policy that transcends a particular issue. Policy is...
Well, this, this policy is specifically related to best and brightest.
Right.
And it's specifically, sunset's on June 30, 2020.
Yes.
So this is a, this is in essence the old Mission Impossible, you know, it goes away.
I just think that it's not right that other people got bonuses who we paid the employer and the employee bonus for that person, and yet for teachers, we're making that teacher pay the employer and employee bonus. And these people make the least amount of money.
Well, these are the teachers, and they're the ones that we presented both options. You want the 2,500, 1,000, which is the gross, and we pay the employer portion, or do you want a reduced amount for the employer taxes so that the recognition bonuses would actually be higher?
I just think the definition should be consistent amongst all pay for everybody.
Caroline.
I agree with Shirley. Since we have a memorandum of understanding with the union, that's what we should follow for this year. If we want to look at it again in next year before this begins, we should already look at it before the money.
We won't have it next year. We'll have another one.
That's true.
Yeah. I think because we might open ourselves up to a lawsuit like they did on the state, that we need to make it clear that the gross amount is less the employer FICA taxes as per the memorandum of understanding.
In the policy.
Yep, yes.
All right. So the reason we have to have a policy is because for the recognition awards, the state says we have to have a policy. Otherwise, we wouldn't even need a policy for the other parts.
Correct.
But I think that, and we want to get this policy implemented so that we can get these
Yes.
amounts paid
Out.
Correct.
As soon as possible. So we can, I believe, say in the sentence that Mr. Robinson brought up, the award amounts identified in law, where in the case of one or four, category one or four awards by policy are considered to be gross award amounts less employer FICA tax of 7.65%.
Yes.
Then it needs to clearly define what gross is.
All right. So I think we add that, but I don't want to have to bring this
No.
back because I want to get the approval process going.
So that we can pay these...
So that when we approve this for advertising at the board meeting, we're going to need to note that addition and then...
Is this coming up today or next?
Today.
Today.
Okay, right.
And we want to get it up today so that we can get it advertised, so that you can approve it finally, the first meeting in January, so people can get paid the recognition amounts. So this one has more urgency to it than the other ones.
You're going to do this in disappearing ink?
Well...
They're changing it again this year.
Well, that's why this is for one year only. If we have to, you know, we may have to do something else next year, but...
You think? I don't think we're going to have this next year. I think we're going to have...
I know.
It's going to be called Teacher Races or...
All right. I believe those are, all right. So for this afternoon's purposes, we'll pull 8.10. I'll bring that back to you for consideration again in December. And we will make the change that we just discussed at the board table to 6.93 and then get the rest of them, everything but 8.10 advertised.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
And that is the end of your presentation, correct?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. Up next is a discussion of the internal auditor position and committee. And Mitzi, I'm going to let you start this off because you had some interesting...
Interesting conversations.
Conversations last week.
Yeah. So I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but Brevard County Schools has a pending audit finding from the Auditor General regarding their internal auditor. They have hired an outside firm, and the interpretation from the Auditor General is the word employee means to hire an individual employee, that you cannot hire or turn your internal audit function over to an outside entity, that it has to be an internal candidate. So I asked them what the justification was. They said they did have a legal opinion from their general counsel, which they weren't willing to share, but that their issue is is that throughout statutory language, the claim is, is that the word employee is always used to mean an employee, and if the option is available to you to use a contractor, it would say employ or contract throughout the statutory language. So I, you know, because the, well, the definition of the, where I agree, the definition of the word employee is work for hire, which, I mean, could be anything.
And employ means to use.
To use, right. So again, interesting thought process, but that is the stance from the Auditor General's office. I spoke with Micah Rogers at a conference I was at last week, and he is the audit manager for all school boards with the Auditor General's office. So I'm not anticipating that if we were to take a different take, we wouldn't receive a finding when it's our turn with the Auditor General. I did ask, however, since there's no one individual who knows everything, although Eric and I think we do because we're CPAs, there's no one CPA you could probably hire that could do, you know, that's an expert in construction and HR and everything else. So I said, if we were to hire an individual CPA who could perform the attestation function, however, they also subcontracted out the work to an outside auditor to do the specialized audits for HR or construction, would that, would we still be in compliance? And he said he didn't see why that would not be the case, that they could coordinate everything. So again, you know, my conversation was more about taking money out of our classrooms, but with him, and there were a lot of other interested, I had Lee County standing there with me and Pinellas County and Marion County. There were four or five of us kind of drilling the poor guy, so. But so it would appear that we will have to probably come up with a job description, and you guys will have to hire yourself another employee other than a superintendent.
And of course, that one person will not be able to do the job that we need because they will not have the expertise in the areas to do, you know.
Agreed. Agreed. Hold hard, Lillie.
So we're not doing that. We're not doing that.
Well...
We're thinking that we're going to have to hire someone, yes, that would be...
Or we will receive an audit finding.
Obsee it, but we'd have to hire outside anyway because every process will not, this person will not have the expertise in every process to do.
And I apologize. I had to use the restroom, but if I missed something, so the board would hire someone that would be like the auditor liaison. I really believe that, because I've seen other districts do it without a liaison that, from an employee standpoint, I mean, they use...
The board got a finding.
They're all of a sudden changed.
From the Auditor General, and the Auditor General's general counsel has stated throughout statutory language that the word employee means to hire an employee, and if you have the option to contract, it says employ or contract throughout statutory language, and that's what they're going with, so short of us being able to get Art to drill it, drill down and find that, because I copied him to see if he could, you know, contest that. But that's, they won't show me the legal opinion, so I can't really tell you exactly what it says, but that was the gist of what I was receiving from Micah.
It's frankly annoying to me because they, I mean, they come up with an opinion just out of whole cloth, which doesn't, to me, make a lot of sense
Agreed.
given the verbiage in the statute.
And/or is very clear.
I just pulled just some version of Black's Law Dictionary. It's probably old since it was in my, in my library, but employ, and the word in the statute is employ, the first definition in Black's Law Dictionary is to make use of.
Yep.
Number two, to hire.
Yep.
Number three, to use as an agent or substitute in transacting business. Four, to commission and entrust with the performance of certain acts or functions with the management of one's affairs. It has nothing to, I mean, the word employ does not mean necessarily an employee.
Well...
Those are different words. So it's somewhat frustrating. So the question, first, it would be nice, if that's what the legislature intends, they clearly could say so, it would be nice if we could get some clarity perhaps in the next legislative session, so we either know what our obligations are or tell the Auditor General in essence to back off, you know, one way or the other.
With findings, there have been such that we just receive a finding and say, we accept it, but we think this, I mean, in the broadest...
Well, except for now there's new rules with 1279, you have to make any corrections within six months, or you have to appear before the J-LAC, and, I mean, there's a lot more to it now. You can't just ignore the findings, unfortunately.
Well, I didn't mean ignore, but I know there was one...
I did, I'm sorry to interrupt. I did ask about Brevard County Schools because during the bill analysis, it stated that Brevard was one of the schools that was in compliance.
Correct.
So I'm like going, wait, I'm confused because they have an outside firm, except for the analysis was done in 2013, 14, when they did have an internal audit department with employees. So it wasn't that it, they were in compliance then, they're not in compliance now, is apparently what I'm, is my understanding.
Eric.
And I had to guess this is going to be more expensive.
You think?
Yeah.
Because you're still hiring the firm, and now you have to hire an internal person.
Yeah.
So I would imagine, yes.
So can we not follow up with, I mean, is there not, I don't, I believe when we were going through this, and I had made some calls to confirm the, does it have to be X, you know, an individual working, an individual or a firm? And it was very clearly stated it was either. It was up to the board discretion.
That's what I had heard.
So I...
I had always heard employ. I heard from Joy Frank, it was an employee. I heard from DOE. That's why when I brought it back originally, I said we have to hire an employee. Then it was you had received additional information, you had also, so I was like, okay, well, let's go down the other road because it makes more sense, more resources available through a firm.
So what are our options? Because we have to put this moving forward. I'm totally against it being a person. I think it's going to be more expensive. I think it undermines the independence, the whole purpose of it being outside.
Well, one option would be to at least wait until we get an audit finding, which may not be for a while, and in the meantime
Work to change.
Perhaps work to change.
Clarify the law.
Though we may never get to that point.
And I will fall back on our legal opinion because Art did provide us with a legal opinion.
Right. So if you did something wrong, it's my fault.
It becomes attorneys fighting. Well, it becomes the attorneys who have to fight it out.
Yeah.
So we can do that and say we relied upon our attorney's opinion and went forth with hiring a firm.
Eric.
Yeah, I kind of like that, too, because us now having two employees and two evaluations and
Makes no sense.
it's just, it's just going to bog us down
Makes no sense.
unnecessarily.
Perhaps this is something I think everyone here agrees on, we could task our lobbyists to work on.
Yeah, I think that's...
Clarity. I mean, if the legislature really means that, then say it, and we'll have to deal with it.
Yeah.
But if it's not what they mean, let's be, let's find that out.
Yeah, we can run that up to Blackwell. Shirley?
Yeah, I agree. We ought to go ahead with what we planned. I mean, because I think even if we were to try and hire an employee, I mean, any employee that would come forward has got to know that, you know, that job is probably short-lived. I mean, as soon as the legislature meets again and fixes this stupid problem, you know, we wouldn't need that person anymore. So it's like...
Five hours.
And there are a lot of people right now who aren't in full...
Five hours a week.
A lot of because they're still trying to figure it out, so.
So what I say is, what do you think? Go forward with, we've got our risk assessment. They're going to come to us in January at our workshop, and then we'll prioritize of the top 10 departments and what they have seen, where we go. And in the meantime, I think we can go ahead and get our committee together. So let's try to work on getting members of the committee established, one for each board member, and then in December, try to make that official. Do we have to vote on that at a board meeting? I think we do.
Yes, board's anxious.
So that would be something we would attempt to do in December, if everyone can get someone that they feel would be...
So you would have to approve the membership. You don't have to...
I believe you're, I believe you're approving the policy today
Yes, we are.
On the board meeting.
Uh-huh.
And then you would come back and everyone would have their appointment.
So working backwards so that by way of agenda review, having board members to know if we ideally could hit the December 10th meeting, what would that day be so that we have those nominate, I don't know, what are they, appointments?
Nominees.
Appointments, because it's...
That's right, you each appointed.
What day is this? Well, the board meeting is on the 10th, so we'd have to have something, I would say by the 1st of December.
Is that before the agenda review, so then it's...
Agenda review will be on the 28th.
Thanksgiving.
Would it be on the 28th? That's holiday, isn't it? I don't know when it...
The first Thursday of December? It's this Thursday, yeah.
Oh, yeah. So we're...
So that's, ex nata that.
Cut.
So, you know, if you can...
But you could have it for the first meeting in January. There's probably not much difference.
I suppose then you're saying just that the Tuesday before provide it to, because it's a...
You could provide it during...
I would say that, you know, if we could get something gathered by the 1st of December or sometimes that first week, right after we come back from vacation, that would work.
Your first meeting, that first week we return.
Right, okay.
It's the week after that.
It's the week after?
The first week we return is, would be Tues, oh, I'm sorry. Are we talking about January?
January.
Oh, okay, yes. I thought you were talking about December.
Yes, I think so. I think it would be...
I thought we were going to do this in December.
You want to do it December 10?
Yeah, I want to do it December 10th and get it done. But, you know, we have the holiday week next week, so you're doing agenda review now?
Thursday.
Thursday for the 10th. Okay. I won't be doing that.
Well, you can put it, you can put it on the agenda, but the agenda's published the week before, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So it'd be published December 3rd, Tuesday, December 3rd.
You get it around the 1st of December, we can get somebody...
You can get the names published.
Because it's not published till December 3rd.
Okay, that's us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, your appointment.
What, are you appointing yourself?
Okay. Does that sound like a good idea?
I'm in.
Everybody, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Appreciate it. And the last thing is, on the agenda is the referendum. Bridgette?
Thank you for putting this on, and there's no, you know, I know we've talked about this for a couple of years now. I am actually going to, I think we have a lot of other, this is a significant topic. I'm not going to undermine that, and I think it underscores how important our, the confidence in our community is and how generous they have been, but the moving of it to general, a general versus a special election was the topic I wanted to discuss, given the pressing issues that I believe we need to discuss as a board, and I don't see it on the workshop, but I'm guessing we will have some discussion. Mrs. Goodwin, I'm looking at time here, I would ask that this be tabled and postponed to either January or February.
I personally think we need to wait till late spring. I talked to Charles Hines, and they don't need to hear from us if we're going on the ballot in November until their June meeting to approve. And I talked to Ron Turner, and he doesn't really need to have anything sanctioned until early August around primary time. So because of the situation that we have with what's going on in the district, I think the later we wait to make the decision, the better.
Okay.
And just based on that, I think we, you know, maybe, maybe spring, March, April, we bring it up and discuss it then, but I don't, I don't think we should do it any earlier than that.
Well, I'm fine with table, I mean, again, the timeframe of the following year, but I do think it absolutely needs to be discussed.
Yes.
I think it's important we remind ourselves of how important that is, and it couldn't, wouldn't matter if it's general or special at the right point if we don't get our act in place. So I will
Exactly.
postpone that for now.
Exactly. Any other questions about the referendum?
No.
Anything in member comments? I don't know what anyone may want to talk about. We have a lot of things on our board agenda this afternoon, but when we were discussing a little bit earlier the situation with metal detectors, I had been to the Venice Performing Arts Center yesterday and had chatted with some staff. As some of you may know, I do serve on the VPAM board, and I just was amazed at how many people pass through that facility every year and some of the things that are going on. So I'd like to recommend that we either have a special presentation about that facility or have a workshop item to discuss some of the things that are going on, because the internships and the students that pass through that are learning stagecraft and some of the things that are going on there really are remarkable. Not only we have Tony Danza coming this year and some other, you know, great entertainers, so get your tickets, please, but it's, it's remarkable what kinds of student participation we have in that facility that really is making a difference in the lives of some of these students who will go on to, to work in, in stage management, backstage, front stage management, and that sort of thing. The mention that I had of the security team, there are a lot of events there that we don't have any security for, and I think Tim Enos and his staff is, have now met with the folks there, and they're looking at some ways of, I mean, I was at a performance last year when someone was mistakenly had a PAC for diabetic testing, and someone thought that they were going down and, you know, was it a security issue? And the SWAT team was called.
No.
Oh, yes. Oh, my, yes. And so, you know, there's, there's been a few incidents like that, but there's been a number of knives and firearms that have been detected. So, you know, I think it's important to look at that, but I also would like to look at all the great things that are doing.
Since we share this responsibility for VPAC with the city of Venice, should they be part of this discussion?
Well, I think they should, but they kind of have moved on. I mean, when I talk to people in the city of Venice, it's like, well, we've kind of moved on for that. I mean, we've had problems with the soundboard that was damaged that we needed to replace. There's a lot of equipment in a theater that has to be continually upgraded and replaced.
I realize, but this is something different.
We know that, but I would like to see them, and I suggested to them yesterday that they start with a presentation to the city of Venice, since they have a lot of new board members, that that might be the first step they take, because I think they should be working with us more closely, yes.
The Riverview Performing Arts Center also has a lot of outside groups that come in on the weekends. I think, is it next weekend, the BGs, but not really the BGs? And, you know, I think it's great that our community is, you know, has the access to these, but, yeah, I didn't think about, you know, what do we need to do about security? Because I think it's some outsider, outside organization that is planning all of these things.
Yeah, and that's, it's a big consideration. I know for music...
So perhaps we need to look at Riverview also to ask those same questions.
Lisa.
I think we do. Any theater participation, dance, anything that's going on in these auditoriums, you know, there is a, there's a problem that we have with threat assessment, and I'm not at all sure that we have made that accordingly. I know that for music, for MPAs, for, for our music performers, I serve on the state music education board, and we made some decisions last year relative to those music assessments that security would be provided from the particular discipline, because we could, we really knew that that was also an issue.
But it's all through the schools.
It's, yeah.
It's elementary school.
It's, well, it's everywhere, but I think we have to really look at that and assess that. Maybe we're to the point now that we can, can assess that. Bridgette?
I have a member comment, so I want to, I didn't add, so are we, I don't want to interrupt.
No, we're not quite finished, I don't think. Are we finished with this? So maybe we need to talk to chief and pursue really an assessment of this area of our business. Shirley?
While we're talking to our chief, you know, I've been talking to some principals, and they have some concerns on when should outside law enforcement be called in, and maybe that's something that the chief needs to work with his, his staff on, or maybe they need direction from us, or, you know, but needs to clarify between the police and the principals when outside law enforcement should be called in to a school, under what circumstances.
Anything else relative to the chief?
No.
No? Okay. Bridgette?
So I had sent you guys a email, just it was a proposal, very broad stroke, as it pertained to reviewing policies, procedures specifically around training, harassment, misconduct, allegations. Let's... I mean, I want it to be as broad as possible because I don't want to narrowly identify it where we don't... So we say, oh, well, we didn't include that. But... And if we need to open the conversation as we look forward to how we address that, because I believe other members have mentioned this too, that there is certainly a dire need. And I think even as recent as yesterday, there's indications that... Another example of where we clearly have some risk in exposure as it pertains to lack of understanding, lack of process, lack of training when it comes to misconduct, sexual harassment, harassment, how you handle allegation. I know we put our best foot forward, try to find policies that would respond to it. I think that my concern is, what is our... What does that path look like? I'd asked our council just to... Because I don't want these things to kind of wait. I worry if we wait. And there's a lot of decision-making that we need to be doing concurrently. But I wanted to get a sense of what that would look like. I mean, my first thought was, well, we have a potential, you know, risk assessment team and an audit, you know, an outside auditor. But that could be January, February, March. And I personally believe it's like, whatever they call it, a four alarm fire, that we can't wait. And... But we need to be thoughtful, and we need to be fair and balanced. And so I'd asked our art, just in general, of what would that look like if the board were to procure, or how we would assess someone and establish what that scope is. But I think, again, I'm almost hinging on the confidence element. And if I talk about, you know, the referendum and the value there, I think acting as a board very quickly and taking this seriously and how we respond would send a very, very positive message. I know there's other decisions we have to make. I know Mrs. Brown mentioned she's been looking at, in the response to the email, that she'd looked at other policies. I just don't want to delay after, you know, December, and then we have the holidays, and we go to January. And some of these things, as we see even just with the risk assessment or auditor, it took some time. I don't want to wait. But I... So I want to figure out what that path is, get some consensus with the board, and take action to figure out how we address what we can do to improve upon this area.
Well, I spoke with Carol LaShawne, and I think Mitzi has as well, about what kind of document can we put out? Because we don't know... We know what we want, at least in basic, people to come in and review and to perhaps provide us with examples or ideas of how to change policies and procedures, and perhaps also have a training component with it. But we don't even really know who it is out there who can do that. You know, I know big consulting firms certainly can do that, like with the one Bridget put out. I'm sure there are others like that, but I don't know who they are. So Carol and I talked about her putting together something like a request for information that would say, this is the scope of services we're interested in. You know, policy review, recommendations, training on these subjects. And then tell us what your qualifications are for doing that. Give us examples of where you've done that. And then tell us what this costs, whether it's an hourly kind of situation or a project. Because I really don't have a good handle on that. And, you know, we've gotten this one unsolicited, and they may be the right one. They may be great, but we don't know that. So let's put something out to find out. We know they're interested, so at least somebody's interested in doing this. Presumably, there will be others. And try to gather that information and bring it back to you so that you can select somebody. This is a professional service. It's not like we have to go out for a bid to do this. But it's also not the situation where I don't think any of us feel comfortable saying, well, we know these are the... You know, this is the right group without gathering some more information. So I think through Carol's office, she can put something together to bring you information so that you can then say, all right, you know, we've got these... I don't know. I don't know if it'll be two, or 10, or 100, but responses. And the board can pick somebody so we can get them engaged, you know, in the early part of next year to come in and do their work.
And the part that it does kind of hinge back to the chief, but not to our individual chief, but because the law enforcement agency is a new endeavor for the district, and there are overlapping elements, I think that, again, depending on how big you want to make that scope when you ask for that. But I think that may be a relevant question to include in there to ensure the independence and objectivity. I think we have mutual aid agreements in many cases where the police department from the school district will defer to other law enforcement agencies for the independence component. I know in general, when we were adopting policies, at least took a stab at it with the intent of ensuring, you know, the integrity and objectivity of any kind of complaint or alleged misconduct, was how almost... I would use the reference of Internal Affairs, if you will. And because we have that law enforcement arm, it's even something we, I think we need to consider into that, you know, into that review. So that was my loop in.
I don't think there's anything more important.
One of the things that I would like to make sure that happens in this, because I've spoken to some of our employees, I don't want a piece of paper that says it's a hostile environment. I want somebody there to do situational plays back so that they can demonstrate what it is a hostile environment. Because that's what I've...
You're talking about training.
Yeah, but more than... Yes, a lot of training.
And there's a lot out there. I mean, I just, from my company's standpoint, I just remember they're not soliciting to this. But I'm just, when I was onboarding, I mean, there's a lot of different ways, and that's a large company. And so you're right, there's ongoing training. And I think you were talking maybe even the form component. I mean, that's where we need a consultant that says, this is our bailiwick, this is our understanding, this is what we've done before.
I sent an email to HR asking for this a while ago, because it has to be done.
Shirley?
I had a student come to me last year about this. And she was working, and she wanted us to do more sexual harassment training for students on teachers. And I think, you know, the thing that's in the paper today is exactly what she was talking about. But we were looking at reaching out to the, is it the Teen Source? The Source Theater, doing some things with us. But, you know, I left that in HR's department, and I don't think anything happened to it. But I know that when I was at FSBA last year, about a year ago, it was in December, there was a presentation on sexual harassment or sexual activities. And I think that we need to... And I would want to reach out to other school boards to find out what they're doing, because there are some. Because we have to look at, and I don't think that we're doing a good thing by having students, teachers, applicants, all in one... Because I think it works differently when you've got a student on student. You've got a different one, student on teacher, or teacher on student. I guess it could both ways. And employee. I mean, I think we need to break those down, and we need to spell it out. I just forward you all a form that this district used, and it spells out exactly, you know, was this, you know, was this... Did the behavior occur on campus? Did it occur at a school sanctioned event? You know, was it touching? Was it verbal? Was it written? And then it lists, you know, described the incident, the statement of the victim, statement of perpetrator if attached, statement of witnesses, and those are... So it lists it, and it lists down there, what are the outcomes? What did the parents say? What did this say? And I think that we can make that form adaptable for the different situations. And I think we need to make sure that if it's against an employee, it goes in the employee's file. If it's regards to a student, I mean, we keep that. And I think the other thing that we need to make sure that we do, if it's in regards to sexual harassment, we need to look at the federal law. And if the name can be withheld under law, federal law, that we do not release the name of the victim. I mean, I think we have to be very careful about that. And, you know, because that'll change a lot of things that we have to look at. And we can talk to an outside business to do this. But I think we ought to also look at, you know, through the Florida School Boards Association and other school districts, because it isn't just employee, employer, or boss. I mean, the different situations that we have, when it's child on child, student on student, or teacher on student, we need to look at that. And we also need to look at policies. I mean, I know there was a lot of people that said, well, as soon as we knew that Mr. Malzby, you know, did these things, we should have fired him. But, you know, we can't even... When it's a teacher or a classified... We can't, you know, all of a sudden there it's, you know, where they're innocent until proven guilty, you know. So we need to look at, to make sure that we don't have different expectations, and so that we clearly spell out, you know, what we should be doing. And do we have to wait for an investigation to be completed? Or, you know, can we say, well, wait a minute, this comes up to this level, and I think this person needs to be removed? Of course, we can always go back, and if they were proven innocent or whatever, you know, pay them back pay. But I think we need to look at a lot of that. But I think there's more than one policy, and we need to split those policies and those procedures apart for each of those incidences. Because to have it all wrapped into one, I think is totally, totally out of bounds. And then even the discrimination. I mean, that's different.
All right. All right. Well, I would just say one thing, Caroline, then I'll give you the stage. I think it's a sense of urgency. And this is what frightens me more than anything else. It's Friday afternoon at 5:00. Well, it's time for me to go home. I got plans this weekend. No, 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 no. I don't understand that. I don't get that at all. You know, something like this happens, it's something that has a great sense of urgency, and you handle it. If it takes you till 10:00 at night, you know, I mean, maybe that's just the way I am. I've always been a person that believes in answering your phone 24/7 almost and taking care of business. But I think you have to have a sense of urgency with these issues. They cannot fester. They cannot sit. They cannot wait for other people because of schedules. We have a little tendency, because we're a school district, of not taking that sense of urgency to the next step. Caroline?
I saw an excellent movie last night. It was called Surviving Lunch. I don't know if any of you have seen it. And there's a group of people that are involved in our community with trying to provide this surviving lunch to our students. I mean, it was pretty graphic, but it varies. It sends a message. And I think, I'd like us to look into it. I will be talking to some people. Did you see it?
Doesn't have cartoons or superheroes. I don't see it.
No. That's what I'm suggesting for the other thing.
But no, I think there's a lot of... That's my whole point of saying, there's just a lot to consider.
Yeah, but we don't have to wait.
We need to... That's my point. I don't want to wait. So I want to find out how we find the firm and move on.
We don't have to wait to see if this is something that would be agreeable for us
to be able to show.
Are you talking about the video?
Yes. I'd like to go to our principals first.
We have a whole committee process for that, so we adopt it.
All right. Well, based on this conversation, my suggestion is that Mitzi and I work together with Carol to put together a...
RFI.
Some kind of RF...
Something.
RFI. And what we're going to be looking at, and actually what was presented to us, the title of it is Comprehensive Review of Sexual Harassment and Sexual Misconduct Policies and Procedures: Climate Review, Training, and Recommendations. Sounds like that's a good basis of what are we looking for? That's what we're looking for.
We can Google.
So then we can get that out so that we can get information back within the next month, so that in January, we have something to present, or some things to present to you, so you can make a decision on what you want to do, what firm you want to get and get them in here. Does that sound reasonable?
Thank you.
Okay.
I would also want to make sure that we have some sort of a timeline in there. I don't want, you know, some, oh, we'll do this, and then it takes a year to get it done.
Right, right. Definitely.
Anything else?
Michelle.
Are we... Well, are we discussing the big elephant in the room as far as what our next steps are? Obviously, that was not directed at you. Golly, gee. As far as, I mean, I don't... To respect the chair, I don't know what the... We don't have a roadmap.
It's on tonight's meeting.
Well, we have it on the board meeting for new business.
But it's more difficult to do it at the board.
Well, I know it is. So...
We just don't have a roadmap. We're in uncharted territory, and I'm just trying to get a sense of this board. Can't talk, so until we're here.
I will just say that, you know, I was very disappointed with a wonderful email that Barry Dubin sent out to his SCTA members and to myself, because I think the union should remain quiet during this process and have not. And the union doesn't sit at this board table. And maybe we have some members who are reflective of their opinions of things. But I, for one, feel that it's really important for us to get a good interim. I am chair of this board until 2:45 this afternoon. Anything that I was doing certainly was not being done underhanded or trying to usurp the opinions of the board. I was doing what I thought any board chair would do in coming up with some options. I've talked to several people who would be available to us for long term, meaning in the next three to six months, to help us as an interim. One of those people was Bill Vogel. Bill Vogel is very well qualified. He works with the Superintendent's Association. He works with Florida School Board Association. That does not disqualify him for any help with us, in my opinion. And so I guess maybe we just should have some discussion of what people think we are looking to do, how quickly we want to do something. Do we want to have a selection of an interim? Do we want to do that process? Mitzi is wonderful to hold the fort down until we do that and then go from there. I would anticipate, or would hope, that we would have a new superintendent on board by late spring or into the summer. I do not wish to wait a year or till we have an election or that sort of thing to move forward. I would say this, we have a lot of things that do need to take place. We have union negotiations. We have legislative session. We have a community that needs to be soothed and talked to and addressed. We have staff and teachers and administrators who need to be addressed. And I would hope that we would do that within the next few months so that we are in a position to do something with the referendum. But that was my intention. I can't talk to the board. My intention, and I have spent a lot of time working on possibilities of people who might be someone that we could talk to or discuss things with. And it's never been my intention that I was leaving anyone out. It's always been my intention that I was just trying to help. So if you think that, then shame on you, because it is not the case. Shirley?
I read in the paper that you'd been discussing with Mr. Vogel. And, you know, we worked with him during the superintendent's search, and we've known him for some time. And I'm comfortable with, you know, his background and his understanding, and even his understanding of this community. I mean, I would feel comfortable with him stepping in as an interim basis. And I agree that hopefully we could start the superintendent's search soon, and to have somebody in place, you know, at least make the decision, you know, before June. Because I would think that, you know, they would want to be in place and working, you know, because the summer is the planning time for our school. And I would like to see that also. So I think that timeframe that you were there in, and, you know, this is uncharted territories. I mean, we can't take the action or, you know, accept the... What is it called, the separation agreement? I mean, because we'll be without a superintendent, and, you know, we've got an interim COO at this time. You know, we're kind of short-staffed up on there. I mean, I think that our district needs somebody in place. I mean, I think that our district needs somebody in place that, you know, understands the role, and can move forward. And I feel very comfortable with Mr. Vogel, and if he's available, you know, I would think, go ahead. But I don't know where anybody else is.
Eric?
My first concern is that you used the word "options" and "possibilities," but you only presented one person. I think that this is of such paramount importance that we should, it should be vetted and discussed. You know, we are a district, I think that we should, we should be able to have more than one person, not say, well, this is the option, this is the one that's being presented, and this is what we're going to go for. I think that the community, and I'll use the community in a big C, not a little c, needs some healing. This board has done, and I'm going to say this board, I'm not going to point to particular board members, because I'm on the board. We have done some things that exacerbated the situation. We have done some things that helped cause this situation. I don't feel any need to go into them in detail. I think we all know, if somebody asks me questions, what they are, I'm only happy to describe them. But because this board has made these decisions, I think this board needs to take responsibility for those decisions. And Ms. Brown has mentioned on numerous occasions, who's going to want to come to this board with these type of issues, and these type of problems? And so I think that prior to going out for a superintendent, we need to calm the waters. I think before we go out for a superintendent, we have a lot of healing to do, we have a lot of soul-searching to do, and I don't think that this should be fast-tracked by any stretch of imagination, because picking the superintendent is such a huge responsibility of ours. And I think we should move forward. And when you, and the article didn't just mention Bill Vogel, it also mentioned another person. And when you stop and think about, how do you go about healing? Who has relationships with the community? I know you started off by, you know, talking about the union. The union's part of the community, whether we like it or not. They're part of the community. And we don't need to be in the middle of a selection of a superintendent while teachers are in here picketing. And then the number-one question they're asking this, the future superintendent in superintendent's search is, are you going to settle things with the union or not? That is not, should be the primary focus of what the superintendent's search should be. We shouldn't let that overtake it. We need, we need, we, not just our board, but the community as a whole, need to reach out and settle the waters with the teachers and the classified. They are the assets of this, of this school district. It ain't sitting here. It's not the landings. It's at the individual schools. Those are the people that we need to heal with. We need to heal with the foundations. We need these people. We talked about Gocio. What makes Gocio a success, and Emmy Booker, is how our community steps up and provides support. We have some healing that needs to be done with those foundations. As you could see at the last Tuesday meeting, we have a lot of healing that needs to be done with our community. Our community's upset with us, and they're watching us now. And to just say, okay, thank you, we'll turn the corner, and we're just going to move forward, and I don't think that, I think that they deserve better than that. We deserve better than that. Our students deserve better than that. And I'm sorry, when you start thinking about who has the qualifications, names start bubbling up to the top. People who already, who can go to these foundations, go to the community, go to the teachers, go to the classified, and talk about trust, and talk about what they're going to do. And you can't just talk about it, that they know that those peoples, when they say that they're going to do it, that they trust those people. I think Bill Vogel's a great guy, not disputing that. I think Bill Vogel would be a great superintendent, not disputing that. But the question is, is timing. When you have a toolbox, you have to have multiple tools. I think Bill Vogel, so let's take an example. Let's say Lori White was retiring, and Todd Bowden was going to be able to come on for six months, and we were going to have Bill Vogel be a caretaker during that period of time. I think Bill Vogel would be excellent person for that type of situation. But that is not the situation we find ourselves in. We find ourselves in a very damaging place. And so when you think of people, bubble up. I think of people like Wilma Hamilton. I think of people like Lori White. And you know that if Lori White goes out to these, to the teachers, and tells the teachers, I'm going to work on this. I am not going to abandon the school district. I'm going to install trust. When we, we have people who are fearful of the superintendent. We have people who are in fear. We have people like Lori White who can go out and calm those people's fears. And yes, when you have the union, Lori White did have, had a good relationship with them. And I would think that if she would say, listen, I know that there's issues, can you just hold tight? Can you just put this off for the benefit of the district? And I think Lori White has that type of reputation that would get them to hold off. We need somebody who knows our community. Bill Vogel's a good guy. I saw him during the search committee. This isn't about Bill Vogel. It's about our community. We need somebody who can go to the foundations, who has an existing relationships with the foundations. She doesn't have to walk in the room and says, hi, my name's Lori White, let me tell you about myself. They already know about Lori. Not only do they already know about Lori, they love Lori White. Everywhere you go in the community, when you think of our school district, and who, who they love and trust, Lori White comes up. Yeah, Barry sent out, you know, the thing about how the teachers, was it 97% of the teachers want Lori White? I don't think that's something you can just casually disregard. I think we have to worry about what our teachers think. We have to work on this. This is something that we have created, all five of us. We have created this situation, and we need to take responsibility for that situation. And we need to do everything in our power to make sure that this quails the water. And once we have got ourselves on solid ground, where we restore the relationships with the foundations, restore the relationships with the teachers, restore the relationships with the classified, and yes, restore the relationships with the community overall, at that point, we should go forth and look for a superintendent. If we do that before we do that, are we really going to get the best superintendent? I think, I think by restoring the trust, healing the community, we will end up being a better school district because of it. If we, if we go full-blazing, and ignore these people's concern, and turn the corner, and just go forth, we're probably not going to get the same quality candidates, like Ms. Brown has suggested, that if we, that if we had let the waters calm themselves down. So my suggestion is, is Bill Vogel's a great guy, but I don't think that Bill Vogel is the right guy for the right time at the right place for Sosa County School District. And I think somebody like Lori White is.
I'm glad that you finally said Lori White, that magic name. Caroline?
Well, other than resurrection, resurrecting Gene Witt from the dead, which unfortunately, we can't do, because he would be the ideal one. He stepped in for us like five times already in the past. I've known Bill Vogel for probably 15 years. Wherever he goes, he's loved and respected. He's very calm and mature, and very, just has a nice calming effect about him. And I don't see him as having a problem coming in here. And I think more of the responsibility falls on us to go out and calm the waters. We need to be out there talking to the community. We need, we don't need to depend upon one person to do it. It's all our responsibility. We created this, we need to make, we need to fix it, all of us. So therefore, I would, I would agree with Shirley. I think Bill Vogel would be ideal for this district right now. He doesn't have those ties. He doesn't have the negative. And whether you believe it or not, there is negative on the person that you're talking about. So don't make me say who. There is negative. Let's move forward, which I've been saying to the press all along. I'm in favor of moving forward. And moving forward and not backwards, and I think that would be moving backwards. I want to move forward.
Bridgette?
Well, a couple of things. This is one meeting where I walked in, and I said, I have absolutely no idea what's going to happen. And, you know, it's been challenging. This is so important, and I know we all feel that. And I think with given sunshine limitations, this is our only opportunity to talk about it. You know, I have to commend anyone, and there are beyond the two names that have been mentioned. There are other people who I know, I individually have reached out, because you don't want to throw someone's name into this arena, it's not the friendliest arena, before talking to them, and even seeing if one they have bandwidth, or if they're willing to, or what have you. But I want to thank both of the people who've been mentioned for their willingness to come into this, because it's not a rosy, ideal situation. And so I think that needs to be said first off. You know, I also think that, I agree with a lot of statements that everyone said. I think that there are, I think the interim, ironically, it's so important to get some stability as soon as possible. But I also think it's important that we, as the board, realize the shaky ground we are on. And we can reflect on what got us here, and I think that we should do that individually, but take it seriously. But I also think the interim, and who that person is, will actually play almost even a more significant role than the long-term superintendent. Because if you don't get that right, I don't know that we would have valuable candidates even willing to step up to this great district. And yeah, we absolutely play a role in that as board members. And so I guess I'm torn, because I think that even just really reading through the Herald Tribune was some of my only window into kind of what this potential conversation would look like. And I think that, you know, listening to each other is really important, and that's what I had heard from some of the candidates, or I shouldn't say candidates, but willing participants, if you will. That was really important to them, and I think that's meaningful. Now, I will tell you, I don't hang, when I say we need to unify, I believe that's unify on the goal and the focus of this district. I think it's okay to have differing opinions. Sometimes I think that's sometimes what divides our board. I have full respect for each person and the role that they play, and if you don't agree with me, that's fine. But I think the weight and the importance of being the voice of the community, and figuring out how we tread through these waters is very, very important. My concern is, even hearing just the discussion, which everyone brought their statements forward that I think is warranted, that we would rush to a position where we continue on that path of division. And again, if there is no path forward where we have a 5-0 vote, I just, my only concern is rushing forward where we continue through a division. And I don't want to, you know, prolong it. I don't even know what that would look like for anyone who would be the interim interim, and I think we need to be very fair to those people as well. There's no roadmap, and that's why I wanted to talk about this before we get up there and any action takes place. But part of me believes, especially based on what I just heard, is do we need to open it up where we consider some? I mean, I think the interim, given the circumstances that we're going through, given some of the things that we're tasked with doing, beyond just, I'm not talking about union negotiations, I mean, even the topic about doing an audit to really address some of these policies. But I mean, from a leadership standpoint, I agree that there's the independent outsider that could bring real value, so you don't have any, I don't know, historical pains, or, but I also think that there's an outsider that's saying, people are like, you don't, I mean, people feel that disconnect. And so trying to weigh that's been very hard for me, because I think both bring valuable assets to the table. But I think that there are concerns on both sides, and I believe the pros, by the way, far outweigh the cons in both scenarios. But if we can't really, if we, just based on what I'm hearing, I am of the belief that perhaps we need to, again, if there is a willing participant for the interim interim, for more than a couple of days, that, no, and I want to be thoughtful for everyone at this, I mean, this is not an easy scenario, but I want to be thoughtful about it, and not rush through it, not take like months. I'm talking maybe an additional, I mean, this is the first time this board has been able to talk about this. And part of me feels that that almost puts both of the potential names of the interim, they're back up against the wall. And we, I believe, we should want whoever is in that interim position to be successful, to try to help, we will support that healing component. But perhaps even the approach of picking that interim may need to be paused for a moment, so that further consideration can be made, and what that path looks like. I know I was trying to play out every potential scenario, so it's not a big mess further today. And, you know, if there are names out there that have ties to the district, but independent at the same time, I mean, I have a person in my head that I'm creating, he or she. I don't know if they exist, is it due, step up? No. But I really do, I just am worried that if we continue down kind of just what I just heard, that may not, we will not be moving in the direction that I think we could be moving in, and setting up that interim to be successful.
I also talked to Janelle Yost. She is a retired superintendent, who is now doing a short-term project at Manatee County. She's interested. She has a house on Longboat Key. One of the nice things about Bill Vogel is Bill Vogel has a house in Manatee County, although he lives in central Florida, so that was a nice given, and he was available. The only thing that I can figure is that, you know, perhaps we address this and do a short-term search of someone for an interim, and let those people that are interested make application. I don't know if we go about that in a standard way that we would choose a superintendent, but have people come and speak to us, and do that sometime between now and Christmas, and have them perhaps start the 1st of January, if that would be possible. But there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and yes, there's a lot of healing that needs to be done. But the healing must take place at the same time we continue down the road with some of these other processes and policies. And we need an expertise in those processes and policies, I believe. And we don't go backward, we go forward, and I really feel that that's so important. But, you know, we have teachers, yes, we have teachers that need to be heard, we have classified workers that need to be heard, but we also have administrators that need to be heard. And administrators are very concerned, that they are not normally heard. And so I think we need to take all those, those individual needs into consideration. And maybe that's what we do, is we just say, let's go forward. I think Bill Vogel, Dr. Vogel, is a wonderful choice for us. I would, I would be fine with that. But I certainly don't want that at the expense of all of us being heard, and feeling that we had a place at the table. Because I don't have a place across the street at the union. We all know that. I mean, you just have to read, you know, a couple of their internal emails about me, that you know that, you know, all of this harass, that's what I call harassment. What they do on a given week with their emails are harassing to me, and it's abusive. And then they pontificate that with teachers, who then write harassing and abusive emails to us. And I think this has got to stop. It really is not helpful, it is not productive, and it needs to stop. And it would be very nice right now if they took a pause, and just we didn't hear from them, because they are not at this table, they can't make this decision. We must do that. And that's all I ask. Shirley?
Perhaps we could put something out there that if anybody is interested, that maybe they send in an application or a letter of interest, and then maybe on the December 10th, that we might, I don't know, I guess, didn't we interview the superintendents at a workshop? I mean, maybe we interview these people at a workshop, but I would like, before the workshop, I'd like to get a, you know, their backup information that I could check up on.
Well, there's a number of searches that have taken place. Both the Superintendent's Association and the School Board Association have just chosen some, and worked on some searches around the state. Those people that they have worked with that were not chosen, maybe, on the list, but they could give us, they could help us short-term with something. I know that. And I think they'd be willing to do that.
I would want to make sure that they know that the interim is probably an interim. I mean, you know, because I wouldn't want the superintendent to be there, and then perhaps, you know, as I've heard happened in the past, discouraging other employees from then applying. And so I would think, yeah, any administrators or whatever that might be thinking of wanting to apply for superintendent, to think twice about applying for interim superintendent. I got, I got calls on that, too. And I'm like, you know, an interim is an interim, and we really don't want you to be an interim, and then move into the superintendent's position, because I, especially if it's an internal person. Because I think that would be sending a message to the other internal employees. But then again, you know, if we take somebody, you know, like, you bring somebody from the, you know, Lori White back, and that might be sending another message to those people outside, like, we really don't want people from the outside, we only want people from the inside. And I don't know that that's the message we want to give either. Because I know somebody said- Because I know somebody said that they heard from somebody that even Pam Stewart might be interested. And I'm like, really?
She was interested in throwing her name in the hat. She's never been a superintendent. I would prefer in this case that we had someone who had superintendent experience.
Well, I, I think especially since, you know, we're, we're pretty low on, you know, we've got some positions over in, you know, facilities. I mean, Jody is carrying an awful big load right now.
But he's been, his name has been in the, in the list, I've heard.
Yeah.
Right, Jody?
We need to give you another job. So, you know, so do we want to go forward with this or, I mean?
I guess my thought was, there may be, so there may be more and there may not be. And that actually is the interest of this component as I think it's, I would like something to be done certainly before then, before we go on holiday, before Christmas, holiday break.
I would like to make the decision on December 10th. I mean, if we can't make it now.
And then, but I think why that's important is some of us may not, I mean, you have the opportunity to pick up the phone and talk to various people. This is the first time as a board we've been able to talk about that. Perhaps, I think it's important that you, we heard each other's concerns and interests, but I'm not saying that that changes the pool. It may add to it. I don't know. I just think, again, it's a much more collaborative approach to it. I don't want to leave the district in interim interim. At first, when I think, I first heard that, I thought that was the wackiest thing I've ever heard. And then I thought about it, I said, "Well, I don't, I don't know how else we do that without being transparent, without feeling, being thoughtful." And I, I want to make this clear that I don't want to send a message of continued instability to the district. But I have faith in, hopefully our message is clear and keeping that time very short for, for anyone who has been put in a position for the interim interim and looking, but I don't want to assume. And, and then, and then moving forward, like I said, if it's, it's just much thoughtful approach, it doesn't necessarily mean it changes. Maybe we have one more. I don't even know, because there may, there may not just be that many people out there. But I just want us to be very thoughtful. And I think the interim, from a longer, like interim, is going to be a very pivotal piece, as are we and the way we approach this, on this being a successful move forward. So, that's my opinion.
Eric?
When Ms. White and I discussed this issue, she only wanted to do it for 5-0. So, that's kind of, that's kind of a moot point. I also do not want this to be a 3-2 vote. And so, in the interest of trying to have a new beginning, I'm willing to, you know, I got to trust the three of you since you guys know, I met Mr. Vogel three years ago. Seemed like a nice guy. Three of you, a valiant forum, it's probably good enough for me. My only request is, is it possible for me to meet with the man and actually talk to him one-on-one? And if I could do that before December 10th and he gives me a certain amount of, of good feeling, then comfort, thank you, Ms. Sucker, then I would, I would, I would be fine. My goal, my goal is not to be 3-2. And if we could have someone like, you know, Ms. Corcoran or Jody, Jody's got too many interims after his name.
Yeah, listen, Jody.
But, but if we have, if we could make, make someone like Mitzi, the second-best CPA in San Jose County, be the interim until December 10th, if that's agreeable to everybody. So, I, my goal, my, my promise to you is, I'm not going to make it 3-2. My promise to you is, I will give Bill Vogel a fair shake. All I ask is, I could at least meet the guy before deciding. Is that a reasonable request?
I think it's very reasonable.
Okay.
Very, very.
And then?
And other people as well. I mean, we can have other people here on the 10th if we choose to do that.
Okay. But, but I'm saying if the three of you, I'm not going to fight that issue. I'm willing to compromise.
Yeah, I like that, Eric. That's a, that's a good, a good thing.
Well, you know, I, I think that's something that we need to bring up because, you know, last, when it became apparent, we were going to be making some changes here. And that's going to be a surprise. We're going to make those changes this afternoon. We won't tell you what it is though.
What are we doing?
I'm, I'm being facetious there.
There's so many changes. What changes are, which change are you talking about? There's so many changes.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, you don't know? We're going to take an action this afternoon? Oh, you're... But I reached out to you, Eric, and I said, you know, "I really think that what we need to do is, you know, like, like they do at the end of a war, you know, we have a peace treaty and let's work about..." Because you said, "We need to work together to build our board back up and we need to help our community." And Eric and I shook on that. I didn't have, you had so many people around you last Thursday, it was a week ago Thursday at Tiger Bay. You were the speaking. All I could say was, "Good job. I didn't get to talk to you." But I also talked to Pat and Barry and said, "You know, we really need to move forward." And they gave some agreement that we all agree, we're, we're going to try. Because it wasn't one person that was causing all the problems on the, on the board. There was five, if not seven, or eight, or nine, or 10 causing issues. And, and we're going to hope that we're, and I understand Caroline had a discussion too. And we're all going to try. We're all going to try. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
For the record, we did not talk about anything that was going to likely come up for a vote.
Hey, what are you talking?
We just said that we're, we're, we've got all these cameras in here, Shirley. We did not talk about anything that would reasonably come up for a vote. Just that we were going to be nice to each other. There's going to be no vote that we're going to be nice to each other. So, I don't expect that to be a vote, so.
I may, I may make a motion for it at some point though. Just saying.
We need to kind of eat that one.
Okay. So, anything else before we break for lunch?
At the moment, but I think things that will have to be considered this afternoon are if you are going to engage in any kind of process between now and December 10th to, you know, we've talked about two names. You've talked about two names.
Now one.
All right. So, are you looking, and I don't know the answer to this, are you going to look for other candidates between now and the 10th or not? If you are, that drives processes that will have to be put into place. If not, if this is simply kind of a period of time for Dr. Vogel to meet individually with, with Eric and others, that's, that's a different set of events. I just want to make sure that you're clear to the staff, if the staff is supposed to be doing anything, to put a process in place.
I don't know that there, I mean, really, if you think about it from, I don't even know what day it was, but from the meeting before this one to now, there's no process. I mean, I think, I don't know that, I don't want to put more burden on staff right now. I don't know that we need a search firm. I think this was the first time we were able to come together that will allow us the opportunity to, if they hadn't already, speak to some of the names suggested in the event, in the next time between now and the 10th, which is not much time. If anyone were to come forward that fits, that we think, I mean, we all, we know each other. We know what works, what doesn't. And I think that was why I said, "I hope everyone comes with their egos set aside and their ears open because there may be something else." And so, perhaps it gives us, I'm not sure that it will, but that was kind of my point. It gives a little bit more time. And so, individually, people can reach out and think through it a little bit more after hearing from their board members. I don't want to put staff through a search. If some were televised, if anyone wants to step up, please send your names over to us. And I mean that seriously. There may be people we haven't thought of, but I think I'm going to leave it upon the board. The only thing I ask of the board members is that, kind of going to my statement as before, is being very thoughtful when we do make this decision on the 10th, in the event there is someone else, being focused on the fact that people are stepping up to a very challenging task. And that would be my only request, that we.
Okay. I just, I just wanted some clarity so that people knew what was being expected of them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing being expected is easy. We can all, we can all deliver on that.
That's very, very true.
Except perhaps our, our assistant, she might have to take letters or calls.
She always does.
She always does a good job. Thank you for everything, Kathy. You always do a great job. And this is my last workshop, so I wanted to give a shout out to Kathy.
The other thing that obviously you'll need to consider this afternoon then is, somebody has to be the interim interim superintendent between now and December 10th or whenever the next person would be coming in. But I'm just giving you, giving you what, what you need to deal with this afternoon. Doesn't need to be dealt with right here.
Well, don't we have to set up like the finance, whatever it is that after we choose the new board chair?
Right. During your, during your organizational meeting annually, we also have the Financing Corporation, which is the five of you, has its annual meeting. And that's frankly fairly pro forma. And the chair becomes the chair or the president of the Financing Corporation and the superintendent becomes the secretary.
Who's that going to be?
Well, I mean, that can be, that can be any, frankly, anybody you put in place. If Mitzi is in the role right now as the acting superintendent for purposes of this meeting, I think she can do that. She's, as the CFO, it also makes some sense for her to be part of the Financing Corporation until you get a more full-time, permanent interim superintendent even. You can do an amendment to put that person in. And then obviously, when you get a, finally a permanent superintendent, that person would take.
Well, I hope that doesn't negatively affect her, her resume, that, you know, she was only there for, you know, and then we kicked her out.
Eric?
I just want to procedurally understand what it is you just said. Because it's under new business to accept a separation agreement. So, when we do the reorganization, Todd Bowden's still the superintendent. So, or so we could make, it's okay, it's kosher?
I believe that would be okay, given that we, we would all be happening on the same day.
Okay. So, it's not some sort of policy that automatically makes a superintendent? We have to actually name that person?
You name, you name the person, although in the bylaws of the Financing Corporation, it lists the superintendent shall be the secretary. Actually, it says the secretary of the board, who is the superintendent, shall be the secretary of the.
I just want to make sure procedurally doesn't cause a problem since settlement agreements are new business.
I don't, I don't think it should.
Okay.
Because you're submitting something to the, to the secretary of state's office that just says who the officers of the corporation.
Okay.
Basically, for the time being, I would become the registered agent.